Welcome, everybody. Well, calling the meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four. It is six P M. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance volunteered by Lisa Jensen, Commissioner Jensen, and then we'll go ahead with the roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's begin with one. Well, we have a new planning commissioner, Mister Adam Shin. Commissioner Shin, welcome. Um, we'll begin with a roll call. We'll start with you, Commissioner Shin. You'll state your name and and say if you have any conflicts on any of the items of the agenda tonight.
Adam Shin, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Barbie De Soto, no conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
And Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts. Right, uh. Going to go ahead and read in item number one. Justin Zero requests approval of his own map amendment from the R C residential con conservation zone to the C G commercial general zone in order to allow a short term rental at the property located to at two ten south five hundred west Franklin neighborhood. Uh, Mary Barnes will be, uh, staff member Mary Barnes will be presenting also. In terms of decorum, although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or may ask or or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on. Uh, when speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. Yeah, go ahead and, uh, staff member Barnes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Um, I wanted to go back. Okay, well, um, I did have zoning maps, but I guess I forgot to put them in the presentation, but that's fine. So, um, basically, this, this application is, um, the applicant is requesting a zone map amendment for, um, to transfer from the R C zone to the general commercial zone specifically to get a short term rental within his currently single family home property. This, um, zone map amendment is the result of an ongoing code enforcement case against the applicant due to an existing short term rental within the home. Currently, and again, oh, hold on, I have. Here you go. Okay. Luckily, I have this one. So, um, I just wanted to quickly show the zoning around the property. You can see this is the proposed new zoning map. So that's not what it actually looks like. I just put that C G part on there, but, um, you can see all around the property is there's that blue R C zoning. Um, that is, like I said, residential conservation. It doesn't currently allow it. Short term rentals are not permitted use. Um, there is, as for the uses around the property, right on the south border, while it is zoned residential conservation, there it's a locksmith company. It's a commercial business. And then on the, um, west, north and east sides, it is all currently residential, whether it be single family, four plex or, um, technically vacant lots over here, I guess. But just to, um, kind of outline that at the beginning, there are quite a few residential uses surrounding the property. Um, the majority of uses surrounding property are residential. All right, back to the future land use maps. So here in the general plan, it shows that the subject property is residential in the future land use. Um, that's shown in that light yellow color. And then also in the Franklin neighborhood plan, it shows the same thing. Future land use is R one six, which is a single family zone. Um, I pulled some quotes out of the Franklin plan that are listed up there on that map. Number one, the advisory committee and public stated a desire to protect and strengthen the single family environment of the neighborhood using that R one six future land use. And they acknowledge that the C G, that's, um, the general commercial that is currently existing on the corner of three hundred south and five hundred west. They acknowledge that it's a, it's, there are concerns about that area, um, simply due to what it looks like, the different uses that are there right now. Therefore, in the Franklin master plan, they designated it as mixed use, um, specifically talking about creating a commercial center, a mix of uses, something that will better buffer with the single family residential in the area. One thing that is interesting that I wanna draw your attention to is that the Franklin Technical Advisory Committee at that time specifically made it so these two properties on either side of five hundred west are still, um, residential despite the commercial or sorry, mixed use on future land use shown just south of them. All right. Um, I wanted to just super quickly go over the, um, C E stands for code enforcement. Just super quickly go over that code enforcement history, just saying that the applicant did have a case at the end of last year. It was all wrapped up by February after the, um, this year, after the code enforcement officer was under the impression that that short term rental had been discontinued. Um, however, in April, it was determined or confirmed that there was still an illegal short term rental at the property. Therefore, a new case was opened and the applicant has applied for a rezone. Um, the applicant has made it very clear that he does want to come into compliance with the city code, but with that being said, he does also want to keep his short term rental. Um, so this rezone is really the only way for that to happen. Um, see, and one other thing I wanted to bring up is that, as you are all very aware, when a zone changes, the, um, permitted uses change, right? And there is no guarantee that, um, the only use on this parcel, if the zone does change, will only be short term rental moving forward. Who knows what happens if the applicant ever, you know, sells the property or moves on, something like that. Um, another new property owner could come in and it could, and any of these permitted or conditional uses would apply to this property. So some of those permitted uses within the C G zone include things like retail services, food. Some of the conditional uses of short term rental, but also things that are a little bit more intense, like dance halls and automobile repair. So, um, these are some other things that would be just great to keep in mind that when you rezone a property, it might be a short term rental as the applicant has described for the next few years, but it is going to be rezoned this until someone changes it again. So I put together a quick list of the reasons why staff is recommending denial for this, um, for this zone amendment. Um, it's not compatible with the general plan map goals or the Franklin neighborhood plan. Um, both are aware of the concerns with the neighboring commercial. That is, and for sure that that is a concern, you know, what they maybe what they look like or the kind of the feel of that commercial, but there are things within those plans to help try and elevate it when it does redevelop. Um, and there is no goal in the general plan right now for creating opportunities for more short term rentals. Um, the C G zone allows, like I mentioned just in the previous slide, the C G zone allows uses that are not compatible with the single family neighborhood to the west. I'll quickly go to this aerial. You can see right here where you would turn in to get into this property. All of these properties are residential and it even leads. You can see down here, at least like Franklin Elementary and then LDS Chapel. While these, while the properties south of the subject property are commercial, it is still true that two hundred south is a very much residential street and we don't see that changing with all our future land use plans. Therefore, trying to go backwards. Well, anyways, therefore, having this commercial general use would kind of impose onto that very residential, um, neighborhood. And I included some, just some street view pictures from Google Street View. You can see from five hundred west, there is a pedestrian access. And then from two hundred south is the car access. So people accessing this parcel will come in through the residential, the residential street, um, two hundred south. Um, also, uh, short term rentals do not preserve the character of a neighborhood. That's a common complaint that we get in the development services department. It's always been our policy to discourage them in neighborhoods despite, you know, proximity to commercial or busy roads. Um, there is no public purpose for this amendment. It will only benefit the property owner, um, and it could very well lead to more issues. The zoning department who takes care of our code enforcement has mentioned that short term rentals are a huge concern. They constantly come up. People are constantly, I mean, neighbors are often complaining about them um, for good reason usually. So, um, rezoning this property to allow specifically for a short term rental would potentially lead to more issues in the future where neighbors are coming to us asking why we would ever allow a short term rental here along a residential street. Then, um, finally, parking. We looked at this just today, so that's why it wasn't in your staff report. But a short term rental would require two parking spaces for the residents and then one per guest room. I've never been inside the applicant's short term rental, so I'm not quite sure how many guest rooms there are. But from reports, it seems to be about two or three. So that would be, you know, maybe up to five required parking spaces on the property. Um, it's a little difficult to see in this aerial because it's so far away, but there is a little white car right there. It appears just from eyeballing it. I haven't done any, um, actual analysis that would go into this, but, um, it looks like maybe two or three cars could fit feasibly on that property, meaning that parking would be difficult. And, you know, if this, if this was approved and the applicant came back from a for a conditional use permit, that's something we would have to address. Noise and traffic is, are always the things that neighbors, um, have the most issues with when it comes to short term rentals. Um, I listed some of the reasons for proposed, for the proposed amendment from the applicant, um, that he provided in the letter that you all got. So, um, number one, this has been an Airbnb for the past eleven years without complaints. The original complaint last September was from a neighbor who was worried about having a hotel in the neighborhood. Um, five hundred west is a busy road and that is definitely true. Um, but despite that residential property still lying five hundred west, despite it being a arterial in the city. Um, there are businesses to the south and across the road to the southeast. That is true, but as I mentioned in future land use plan, when those businesses eventually get redeveloped, their plan to be something a little bit more maybe elevated, mixed use with better buffers to the single family home community that surround them. Um, then it's a residentially zoned island. That's another reason that the applicant brought up. Um, and then just my point with that, as I, as I mentioned before, is technically there are residential uses surrounding it, except for, you know, the south for sure. That's a commercial business. That's a locksmith. But there are residential uses surrounding it. It is accessed off a primarily residential road two hundred south. And then finally, um, the applicant did gather support from neighbors, which is wonderful. Um, one of them includes the business owner to the south provided his support, which is great. Um, and that, but it is also true that we constantly and consistently hear complaints from residents from all over the city about short term rentals in the neighborhood. We received a letter or an email that I know you guys, um, were able to receive. I also received a few phone calls from neighbors in the area. Um, who expressed their support for the denial of this rezone. So, I mean, it can go both ways, but from staff's point of view, a short term rental, um, at this on this property is not something that the neighborhood would benefit from. So finally, our recommendation, as I stated, was his denial on this item. Um, Franklin neighborhood, it's an older neighborhood, a historical neighborhood that has seen a lot of development pressure due to its proximity to downtown. And like I said, it's historical nature. So this, you know, rezoning a historical house to be a short term rental seems to, um, really highlight that. And it's not something that we've wanted to see, um, according to those future land use plans. It also could send a message to other homeowners that are on busy streets or near commercial that the city will support rezones, um, specifically for short term rentals. And it does not help to meet the goals of the general plan, which is, um, something that we really need to pay attention to. But the main thing we need to pay attention to when looking at these reasons. Um, any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Jensen.
I have a question. Can you have a short term rental in a mixed use zone?
Yeater would know. You can't. Okay, thank you.
Uh, just a question. Why is the business next door allowed to operate?
Sure. Yeah, I can go over that. So, um, the, do you mean the locksmith just to the south?
Yeah, the one that's still zoned.
Yeah.
As residential conservation.
So the residential conservation zone is kind of a, it's a unique zone in the way that it was, um, kinda, I, I believe dreamed up by the city council back in two thousand and two, where they put it over parts of the city where they wanted to encourage preservation of existing housing. So, um, they, they were seeing a lot of development going on in places like the Joaquin neighborhood and right here. And they just said, we're putting a stop to that. So they put the residential conservation zone on. It says in the residential conservation zone that any zone that, any use, sorry, that was existing in April two thousand and two is permitted to continue as an existing use. But if that ever changes, then they have to completely change the zone, that kind of thing. So this locksmith, um, back in two thousand and two, it was a commercial business and it's just continued to be a commercial business this whole time. This home was a single family home and it's continued to be a single family home this whole time. There's a four plex just north of it. It's a four plex back then. It's a four plex now, that kind of thing.
If, for example, that Airbnb had been operated in operation at the time of this change to residential conservation, could, would that be a permitted use because of how that works?
I, I do think that like, like, for example, ADUs that were in operation back then, now that they have a residential conservation zone, they are allowed to just be in operation. So, yeah, but Airbnb wasn't as much of a thing back in two thousand and two.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna add to your question. It still wouldn't have been legal for them to have a short term rental back in two thousand and two. So if it was there, it still would have been, it had to be a legal use back when this new zone was made.
Also, an answer to that question, when the city put down the R C zone back in two thousand and two, the city painted with a kind of broad brush and there were many commercial businesses that were included in that. And there have been other places around the city where that R C zone for a commercial use has caused some problems. And so we've talked about trying to go in and rezone those commercial businesses to a more appropriate or more fitting commercial zone.
Can, can you speak to, um, what other, like, what other residential? What, if any other residentially zoned areas allow short term rentals?
So, um, primarily residential zones don't. So how it works is if a zone, because we don't actually spell out short term rental in the code, it's hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. If a zone says a hotel or a motel is permitted or conditional, then we say yes. A short term rental is permitted or conditional in this zone. So for example, the D T one and D T two zones, they allow for hotels and motels. So short term rentals are permitted there. So anything, single family, it's not allowed. So in the neighborhoods, this is, you know, something that we wanna try and make sure people understand, residents understand, because some people maybe don't understand that and they buy a house specifically to rent it out as a short term rental. Um, it's just not permitted in single family neighborhoods. It is permitted in these like, like these commercial zones, places where you'd normally see a hotel or a motel.
Is, um, does the applicant live at the property?
Yes. That is my understanding.
Thanks. I, I saw two, I saw two accounts. One, I think, report in indicated, and I mean, I'll, I'll ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, but one was that, uh, he was a grad student in Salt Lake and the other was that he, he did in fact occupy a room within the house.
Yeah, probably best for the applicant to answer. My understanding is, um, at that, uh, the original code case, which started last year, um, at that time, he was a grad student at the U, but um, I met with the applicant just the other day and he said he lives in the garage. Um, in like an accessory building on that property.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jensen.
Um, I can't remember for ADUs, does the owner have to live in a larger portion or can they just live in either of the units?
They can live in either.
Okay, thank you.
That's another good point is, uh, this is, this has the A D U overlay over it. So the applicant is able to apply for that. Obviously, it has to be owner occupied. So.
But if they are in fact living there, that seems like a very natural.
We'd have to check parking and stuff like that. Um, but also another possibility is just to rent out the entire property to one family, like a single family as well and live somewhere else. So there are two options there or to live there also. So three options.
Uh, Commissioner Shit.
I have a quick question. Um, it seems like some of the concern around the rezone is the potential for commercial development that's not just a short term rental to eventually, uh, you know, to, to take place there. Um, is there any possible, uh, are there any zones that are residential? I guess you answered this already. I, I maybe you did, but, um, is there any other option for zoning that would allow a short term rental that's not a full commercial use zone?
I mean, there are, there are a few zones that allow short term rentals, but like I mentioned, they're usually the more intensive use type of zones of things like D T one, D T two, the downtown gateway zone, things like that, C G, um.
The I Todd zone is.
Yeah, the I Todd zone. So these are places where we generally, we want hotels, motels, we want apartments, we want higher intensity residential. So, um, in the Franklin plan, it specifically says that in the future, this needs to be R one six, which is single family residential. So there isn't a, a way for it. There isn't a, a way for it to be single family residential and a short term rental at this time. Who knows about the future, of course.
Any other questions for the staff? Okay, we'll, we'll release you for now.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, let's go ahead with the applicant. Uh, you will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Uh, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted following your presentation. If we have any questions. We will invite you to come forward at this time. Uh, please. I, I, I see two people sitting together. It, it state your name and your affiliation or, or title.
And I don't want to be muted, so I will do what I keep. My name's John Hoglin. Um. My last name is spelled H O G E L I N. I represent Mr. Zyrus, Justin Zyrus, who is the applicant. And he's asked that I make the presentation today. That's okay with the commission.
Alright.
Okay.
There we go.
So I have a buddy, invisible buddy next to me. Okay, so is that okay?
Yeah, can you just repeat your last name again?
My name is John Hoglin, uh, H O G E L I N. I am a licensed attorney with Utah State Bar. My bar number is one four nine eight one. And I uh, do a lot of work with, this isn't my first time in front of the planning commission, though it's been a while here in Provo.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, go ahead. Uh, your timer will start uh, when you start speaking.
Okay, just making sure we have this. Okay, just familiarizing myself with this. Okay. Alright, so um, thank you for uh, letting us be here tonight. So essentially, what we're trying to present today is. You know, just very simple. If it looks like the duck, smells like a duck, it's a duck. And there's been some really good questions asked today about uh, you know, where this property is located. Um, and as has been, was shown on the uh, other maps, so I'm gonna through here. Uh, as you can see from these pictures, it's uh, south, it's all commercial. Uh, as you can see here, we have cars here on five hundred west. Um, we come, here's a, a better picture. So we have the, the uh. The parcel itself there on the corner of two hundred south and five hundred west. And then of course, everything to the south is commercial. And I would ask for the commission to look at this picture and ask themselves, would I buy that house? Next to all these commercials, uh, uh, places that are next to me. Would I have, we, we want to call it a single family dwelling, but is that really? A place where a family would purchase a house and have children on five hundred west that's surrounded by all these commercial properties? Now, if we, I'm not sure if we, then if we go across the street from the property, again, we have more commercial properties to the south. Directly across the street from the property, we have a fourplex and multiple units. So. With all due respect to the opposition, I'm not sure where uh, we're getting complaints. From, certainly it's not from the commercial businesses and I don't see how uh, fourplex or multiple residential. Aspects that are across the street are going to be complaining about uh, an attached apartment onto a house. Um, so that's where I'm coming from, that if it looks like a duck, smells like a duck, it's a duck. Again. If we look at this picture here, uh, we have this lone residential unit among all these commercials. And you know, where the opposition says, well, this rezoning only benefits um, the applicant. Um, and it does benefit the applicant severely, given the fact that. Who's he gonna sell his property to? Um, again, uh, if you're a family, uh, this isn't the ideal situation. Um, if I could go back. Borrow these. So if we look at these maps uh, here, again, we see that. We have the property facing five hundred west and all the adjacent properties to the south also face five hundred west. And those are all commercial. And again, if we look across the street, we have all commercial and all fourplexes. And what the applicant's argument here is essentially is where we have two hundred south is a fairly uh. Sizable road itself that provides for this to be a clear division between commercial and residential. Uh, as for the arguments to the homes to the west, again. You know, I'm not sure where the argument is, is hey, we will have a, now have a commercial property where that whole block is commercial property. Um, and also the, the fact that, okay, there was concern that um, once if he leaves, if we rezone it. Uh, a commercial uh, place could come in. Uh, I think there was an example of a dance hall or be a pretty small dance hall. Or some other commercial. But again, how is that any different from the rest of the block? I, I find it hard to believe that just one parcel of property on this block is going, is, is making such a difference. That it intrudes on this residential. Now, I don't want to leave the commission feeling that my, my. That the applicant is against uh, residential housing by no means. All we're asking is that if, from a logical perspective. It just makes sense that if you have the one corner, I like to make it akin to um. You know, around here, there's a lot of uh, maps about stakes and mords and, and usually you see this one little block. That's out just so they can get this one, one house into the war state. And that's essentially what this is, is we have one little block that has, it doesn't reflect, it's kind of the ugly duckling. It has nothing to do with the properties that it's adjacent to. And again, we have a clear division with the two hundred south that provides a buffer from the residential up there. From uh, the commercials that are below it. And it seems to be a very logical place to do that. Now. If we were to go up another block up to a hundred south, I don't know if the commission can see that on five hundred west, but that white roof, that's actually an H and R block. So again, we have kind of an intermittent residential and, and then all, again, we go back into commercial. And all we're saying, all the applicant is saying is by making this rezone, uh, we're just making it uniform. And we're bringing conformity to this, this place. We're not giving it a black eye. We're not making it different or uh. Or making it a hardship on anybody. Now, there was the question by the opposition, um, and there was admitting that they hadn't really looked into the parking. And so the applicant would like to address that. There is one space in the garage itself and then behind. The residential so itself is there's three spaces for three vehicles. As well as a fourth vehicle that uh, doesn't, wouldn't cause any burden or any additional traffic. Uh, to the, to the house to the west. Um, and also to answer the question that the opposition wasn't aware, it, the um. The add on or additional apartment or whatever you want to call it. Um, it does not have a guest room. It's one room. So there would only be one parking spot that would be needed for that. Um, it, to do that. So there's plenty of space uh, to where it's open and it's not a burden. Uh, for the parking that would not uh. Crowd up the street or, or the things itself. So, um, and that's really, you know, the applicant has tried to bring in and, and. There has been support for it, um, and some other arguments, but I think the, the, the real thing here is. What is it at or take away from its surrounding community? And again, it just seems that logic would apply here that. By taking this one parcel that's been kind of zoned out and again. It, it makes sense why it's like that, because we have a lot of grandfathering in of the, of the parcels that are around it. To where we don't have this uniform commercial zoning that really, if you look at it, it should be, right? I mean, if you're walking down that street, there's no way you're gonna say, okay, where this locksmith is, that's a residential zoning. Or the business next to it, or the business across the street. Um, I would uh, bet. Uh, Buffalo nickel that anybody who walks down that street is going to assume that that's all commercial zoning and has no idea that. Uh, the locksmith is actually in a residential zone with it that was grandfathered in. So uh, are there any questions from the commission?
Go ahead, Commissioner DeSoto.
Um, you said, why would anybody buy that house? I'm wondering why your client bought it.
Well, okay, and this is also, uh, I'm glad you asked that because that raises the other question about uh, him being in grad school. He, he actually teaches at, at Utah University and he's single. And so uh, he bought it as an investment. Um, and he, he, like you said, he teaches at U of U. He got an opportunity to go to grad school up at the U of U. So. He still does live there. He does go to grad school U of U, but he also still teaches at, I'm sorry, did I say U of U? Goes to grad school at U of U. Sorry, Utah. But he still teaches at U of U. So this is his main residence in which he will reside afterwards. So, but, but that's to answer your question, it was for investment purposes, which um, again, in of itself. Um, that was, the reason he bought it was thinking, okay, I can uh, you know, put a, a side apartment on here. And, and make it into a, an investment property.
So the plan at purchase was to have a, a short term rental?
Yes.
Okay, and so did he check the zone requirements at any point?
Um, not until he started trying to, before he purchased it, no. That's true. Um, I mean, you know, this was something that came up in the process and uh, and again. Um, I'm not trying to excuse any lack of due diligence by any means, but uh. When you move in next to commercial businesses that are uh, adjacent to you and across the street and you have fourplexes across the street. Um, that was probably something that was overlooked because of the way the neighborhood looks.
Um, I'm curious, how many units are within the main building?
Well, you have the house itself.
Right.
And then you have, you know, basically the, the add on apartment, which is one bedroom.
Right, but in the house itself, how many rental units were in there?
Just one, right? There's five bedrooms, but the rental unit itself would be the side, the side apartment. Is that what you're asking?
Uh, from my understanding, the, the report by the uh, zoning enforcement was that there were at least three. Rooms with the numbers on them, uh, that were being rented. Uh, so I want to, and, and I'm hearing, you're telling me there's five bedrooms in there. I'm, I'm want to get a number of like, how many? Were being rented?
It really depends from time to time. So sometimes we would offer the house as a full rental. In which case, you know, family comes into town, something like that. And then other times, we had um, shorter term rentals with the individual bedrooms. And there's five bedrooms in the home.
Okay, um, the second thing is uh. On the ADU garage or, or I guess proposed maybe, on, on the garage, there's, how, how many units or rooms in the garage? And just uh, I'm gonna have you just state your name.
Sure, Justin Zyrus.
Okay.
He's the.
Right, um, how many units in the garage or rooms in the garage?
Sure, yeah. So named Justin Zyrus and I live here in Provo.
The, at two ten south, five hundred west?
Yes.
Um, yeah, how many units in the garage?
Yeah, just one.
Okay. And di- does your proposal for this zone change and does it, does it indicate which? In, in the future, what or, or how many units you would operate uh, in the future?
Well, by applying for the commercial zone, we're looking to continue what we have been doing, but. Changing into a new commercial zone would obviously require going through that uh, special use permit process. And so those numbers would probably be adjusted.
It, it'd be dictated by whatever that zoning allows.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Um. Yeah, uh, does anyone else have any, go ahead, Commissioner Jensen?
So I'm curious, this seems like such a perfect candidate to um, be a, an accessory dwelling unit, single family home. It's in a zone that allows accessory dwelling units. Um, or a zone application, a zone change application for like a low density residential zone where you can have more than one. Uh, apartment in, in the house. So I'm curious why you aren't. Looking at doing something like that instead of this insistent on the short term rental option.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily say that I'm insistent on it. It's just something that we had been doing because we thought it was a good idea, looked at the neighborhood. The fact that it was on a busy street near downtown, didn't seem to be any problem, had been doing it for about eleven years and had no issues with complaints or, you know, essentially a good neighbor.
As, as an Airbnb.
Sorry.
As an Airbnb.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So uh, can you restate your question then?
I'm just curious as to why um, you're not investigating, changing it to something that would be. More, more inclusively allowed instead of the, being the one exception.
Yeah, so um, we were advised of the problem, uh, of the fact that it wasn't permitted back in November. And so we've had since November to start investigating different options, because we, we feel that it is a valuable um, asset and a valuable contribution to the neighborhood. So continuing doing what we had been doing seemed to be um, the least path of least resistance, but. We're more than open. I've had multiple discussions with uh, planning here um, to, to brainstorm with them. Well, what do they propose? Like. We, we believe that what we're trying to do is add value to the community and that reverting it back to a single family dwelling is not the best use of the property. And so what we're trying to do is come up with some creative solution, um, by working with the city to come up with some idea. They're more experienced in what the different zones do than, than I am. And in speaking with them. Uh, commercial seems to be what they had also recommended. There was never any recommendation for like a low density um, or any, any other option.
In fact, there, there was a meeting on Monday to prepare for this and that's where the recommendations came from was with the, who was it?
Yeah, we, I mean, I, I met with um, with Mary and I'd spoken with Aaron a couple of times and. Uh, so we've been meeting with the city to try to work out what they think is the best between, you know, put our heads together and figure out a good solution.
Can, can you explain to us um, why the enforcement case was closed based on the fact that you. Understood it wasn't supposed to be a short term rental and then it was found to be a short term rental again?
I personally believe it was a miscommunication. So we had short term, uh, long term rental tenants. On the premises, when there was a carbon monoxide problem. And uh, fire came, um, because the long term tenants had called them at four in the morning. And fire makes assumptions off of what they see. If you ask an individual that's staying at a house. Uh, you know, that is there for two months, they're not gonna tell you, oh, well, the legal definition of short term is thirty days. I'm here as long, a long term. They're gonna say, oh, I'm here for a short term. So there were some conclusions drawn based off of information like that. And the city never spoke, spoke with us to verify the actual factual information.
I'm curious, uh. What, what, what price did you pay when you bought it in two thousand thirteen?
Hundred and eighty thousand.
And uh, you, you mentioned some uh, concerns that uh. Allowing the, the property to operate uh. In this short term rental fashion would allow, would be able to fund the preservation and the historic nature of the home.
That's typically what I do with the funds that we make, yeah.
You'd also be able to do a HELOC or some kind of equity loan to. To, to also fund any preservation efforts, correct?
The way that we currently have it set up is that we're self sufficient. So by taking out a loan, that would not be a long term self sufficient path for me to go.
Um, does anyone else have any other questions? Uh, I don't, I'm not seeing any other questions. Uh, an, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll now open the hearing to public comments. Um, we'll first invite any representatives from the district. There's a district um, representative or. A board member from that district that they could come forward. I'm not seeing any, um. So now open this to the public comment. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person will may make one comment. If we have any questions. We invite you to come back to the microphone at that time. This time is for comments only and if you have questions about an item, please speak with staff privately. Any, any members from the public want to comment? Please, um, come forward, state your name and uh, what city you live in. And, and uh, the timer will start after you've given the name and, and city. Let, let's switch you to that other microphone. There we go. I'm sorry.
Johnny Griffith?
There we go.
There we go, okay. I live in the Franklin neighborhood, um, just around the corner. Um, where I do know uh, everybody that lives in my neighborhood. I live on uh, two seventy nine south. Uh, and six hundred west.
Okay.
Uh, so just around the corner. Um, I do know my neighbors, including the folks that just moved into. A neighbor who moved to grad school and is doing a long term rental. Um. We haven't met yet. I've been in my neighborhood four years. I I haven't met Justin. Um, I did look you up uh, cause I was curious who's in the neighborhood and who's doing what. I didn't know about the conservation zone. I'm recently educated on that. Um, but I just wanna speak to the idea of conservation. In this context, um, the history of what happened in two thousand two, why it's important to recognize that history. And um, why we need to continue to to continue that process. Because what's happening um in other cities and other places. For a homeowner like myself, whose backyards do go into into mixed use properties our grandfathered in. There are problems, there is noise, there is an unknown. We don't know what's gonna happen with these places. We don't know if they're gonna tear them down. If they're gonna put a used car lot in, if they're gonna be revving their engines all night. If the plumber or the whoever, we don't know what's happening and that's been grandfathered in. That's not something I can touch. That's done, that's a done deal. This is not a done deal. I don't wanna go the opposite direction and extend that red line into my neighborhood. When we have a beautiful home, it's a beautiful property. I talked to his landscapers a couple of times, complimenting, that's when I learned it wasn't a residential area. A residential uh neighborhood or a house, I mean, it was being used as a hotel and. I just would hate to see this beautiful home get torn down. Um, you know, in a decade or twenty years, it's it's historic. I've got friends. Who grew up in this neighborhood, they talk about this home. Um, along with all the other corner homes, these, you know, magnificent pioneer homes. Um, some of the first homes in in our city. Um, shortly after things were laid down for the survey in Pioneer Park. Um, I'm concerned about the loss of this historic integrity. Um, it's not conservation minded to extend these commercial zones. In any in any way, shape or form. Um, and as someone that lives in this neighborhood.
Thank you, I I appreciate your your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that please uh come forward? Same thing, state your name and and where you live.
Hi.
There we go.
My name is Brent Hutchison. I live in six 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 west, three hundred south, here in the neighborhood as well. Um, in another historic home. I've lived in this district, District Five, my whole life, um apart from five years in graduate school. And I've seen changes happen in this neighborhood. Um, and my parents also have witnessed the changes as. The commercial zones have expanded. I'd like to back up what Johnny Griffith has said that um. I think it is. A mistake to expand that commercial zone. Um, his representation asked the question, who would wanna buy that house and I'm sure. If it was on the market today. It would not last a week um on the market. Housing is short. And research shows that short term rentals take up that available housing and put it. Um, into benefiting people who are renting out Airbnbs. It diminishes the housing supply. And. Our neighborhood already has such a mix of commercial. And high density housing that we don't need any more of it. Um, we've reached a saturation limit that I think maybe could expand to other neighborhoods instead. So that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public? No, please. Uh, I think I think this, yeah, that one, there we go. Yeah, name and where you live.
Yeah, I'm uh Christopher Wilson. I live, I live, sorry, I'm not getting too close for him. I live uh at five thirty west on two hundred south, so just on the opposite side of the street of his property. Um, by the way, I do think it's a beautiful property. Um, and so I'm not against him necessarily using it for like a rental or anything like that. Um, it would be nice to preserve the property in its, you know, current state. I do like that. Um, I guess my my only concern. Cause it's affected me would be, and I know it's been brought up for today, is just with parking. Um, just a couple of weeks ago, I had someone actually block our driveway, um, and they were just. You know, I I called the police and they got it figured out, but uh, it was just somebody who was renting the property and. They told me that they were told that they were not allowed to park on the property and that they could only use street parking. Um, and so, you know, if I wanted to turn my house into like, let's say, a long term rental. The city would require that I have at least, you know, two or three parking spots available for the for the tenants. And so if um, you know, if it's approved for him to use the property for short term rentals, I would just appreciate. If there was sufficient parking on the property for the number of people who are to uh rent it. Yeah, so that's just my my concern, um, especially on the weekends when the property is. Uh, you know, under high demand for short term rentals. That's also when the street parking is packed and uh, you know, if we have family or friends over. I don't want them parking a couple of blocks down just because it's, you know, streets full. So those are just my concerns, but. Yeah, if if something can be figured out for having as a short term rental, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm not. I'm not seeing anyone else um. From the public, I I see staff members. Um, I have a a question, either the applicant or his representative, if you could. If you could come up and tell us what this the square footage, the the finished square footage of the building is.
Uh, I honestly, off the top of my head, don't know. Um. I would guess like two thousand.
Okay. It it does it have a basement?
Like a. It's an unfinished cellar.
Okay, does it have a second floor on the the main building? Have a second floor?
Oh, the entire building is two floors, two stories.
Okay, so main floor, uh, upper floor and then unfinished cellar basement area.
Can you show that?
Okay.
I'll put a picture of it back up here.
Yeah, I I I don't, I looked off Zillow and it it it, I don't count it as reliable or accurate. But it put twenty eight hundred square feet.
I don't know if that's reliable or not. I mean, the bedrooms are all fairly small. There's one large bedroom, but um.
Okay.
There it is on the corner there, so.
I see the upstairs is hard to see.
There is one portion that's a just a single story that was put in in nineteen seventies.
Gotcha, okay. Anyone else have any, while we have them here, did anyone else have any questions they they wanna add? Uh. Commissioner Shin?
Yeah, I have a quick question with regards to the the question about the parking. Uh, available on the property. Um, you mentioned there is a few spot, a few spots, I believe, behind the main house. Are those, would those be parking spots that would be? Um, ke- yeah, like would 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 they be tandem parking spots for one car parks behind the other? Or would they be uh spots where each car can pull in and out separately without regards to other cars being parked there?
That's a good question. Yeah, it's a mix of both. Um, so we have some that are perpendicular to the main driveway, so there's. Three spots that are perpendicular to the main driveway. And then there's three spots that are uh tandem. In the main driveway itself.
Okay. Any other, any other commissioners have? Questions? Alright, thanks. Uh, we'll go ahead and close the. The public comment portion of the meeting and and the commissioners will will discuss. Uh, discuss this amongst ourselves. Does anyone wanna? Jump in and start some thoughts, um, Commissioner De Soto.
Okay, I have a lot that I wrote down. Um, I just wanna respond a little bit to some of the things that were said. Um. Uh, I really think that having lots of traffic is not a justification because my street. Is that way too and doesn't mean we should zone everything commercial. That would make it so that everything that has traffic would be. Had to be have commercial right on the street and that. I I feel like that's the opposite of the way we need to go for many reasons. One of, well, two of them, the most important are the housing stock, as was mentioned. Um, being turned to commercial, I think that that's, in fact, I think it's a shame that the ones next to this are commercial. I think that was a mistake. I think that. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, um, Director, if that wouldn't be allowed today or what it would. Having homes converted into those commercial ones like the the ones next door to this property.
No, you wouldn't be able to convert it into commercial. The question is, is if they were established as commercial, the time when that was legal, then they are grandfathered in, but no, we wouldn't.
So going forward, this would not be the standard and they would revert back to uh. Residential if that business left.
If it had not been legally established as commercial, yes, so we would want it to be converted back.
Yeah, so.
You know, one of the requirements is it's continuously operated commercially, right? To to keep that commercial use?
This is gonna sound like splitting hairs to you, but. That's true for a nonconforming use. The R C zone is specifically rated to say. Whatever use was there in two thousand two when the R C zone went down, it's not considered nonconforming. It's considered a legal use. For that piece of property in the R C zone.
So it, just because of the language of that, it would, those would not necessarily automatically convert back into residential there. They could, but they could, or they would have to be, they're commercial now.
In the R C zone, they would not be converted back unless the property had a desire to do that and made that change on their own. If it was a nonconforming use. It was not legally established, then it would be asked to go back.
Okay, but what you just said is. If the locksmith. Stops being in business, somebody could come in and be a locksmith there, but they couldn't have a car lot.
That's right.
It have, it would have to be the same use, even if it changed ownership.
That's right.
To the whatever it is under the R C status.
Yes, that's one of the things.
That's what I thought I understood. So theoretically, that would kind of encourage someone who wanted to use it another way to, they'd have to go through some sort of process. Whether to make it residential again or make it another kind of commercial, is that right? Yeah, so um. Yeah, like I said, I think it's a shame when um, I've always felt this way since I moved to Provo and saw all these adorable houses. Uh, I love old houses, um, be these commercial spaces and I thought that was a shame that they ever let that happen. Um, and I think that in the future, we wouldn't, we're not gonna be doing that. Um, so yeah, and I also think that. Um, in terms of, again, turning everything on a busy street commercial, like we can't. That wouldn't be something that we can do and I think that we need to think of the future. And hopefully, when the state and the city catch on to traffic calming in a serious way, um, these would be better. Frontages for these houses. Um, I hope for that. Um, I also don't really love the implication that living next to apartments or commercial buildings is a bad thing. Like inherently, um, I do think that turning things commercial can have problems in terms of. Um. Especially like, there's nobody there at night and that's for crime reasons. I mean. I I lived in uh Salt Lake and would, I worked at the Salt Lake Tribune and when I'd get out of work late and there was nobody down there in downtown. It was just a ghost town then, and I think that's a big reason why they, there was the push to have some um residential put back there to preserve the. The presence of people who would wash the neighborhood. I think that's really important. And so I think that having mixed. Um, mixed uh. Zones or things where they're close together is underrated for that reason. Um. But I also think in a fundamental way, as we've talked about this, uh. Using housement as an or regarding hu- uh, human dwellings as investments has been. Kind of detrimental to access for people who need to live in a house. Or any kind of housing, and I think that that's a problem that the city's really been trying to solve and this would not help solve it. Um, and I I would hate to see also um this turned commercial and torn down. Cause theoretically, if it's zone commercial, somebody could come say they want. Uh, you know. A soda shack or something, so um, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Uh, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner De Soto. Those were great thoughts. I, so, couple of thoughts. I uh surprisingly actually. Uh, think Airbnb is not a crazy use for this property. I just am not a big fan of the plan. I think, but I, but we have the law we have. And so um, I'm not sure there's a way to do it. I just wish there was a way to allow short term rentals that didn't involve making it DT. I think it's a really like limited toolkit that the city has, to be honest. The reason why I think Airbnb is an appropriate use actually for this property is because it is next to commercial. Because it's in a historic building that probably does have pretty high upkeep upkeep and allows it to maintain its uh historic integrity. It's close to a lot of other uh hotels, but what I don't like is this idea of like making it. A zone that has a uh that has by right usage that could tear down the building and build. A bunch of different things on it. So I think the plan to sort of allow it to become an Airbnb is actually. Not great and has a, could have a lot of unintended consequences whenever this gentleman decides to sell the home. So again, I I it's more of a meta comment than the question that might be for us, but I just really wish the city had a better toolkit to allow, cause really it's, we have DT or. One DT two or I Todd, basically. Um, there's no overlay, there's no special exemption. I guess you could use general commercial, but then you have all these permitted. Uses that feel very different in nature than a nice bed and breakfast that's owner occupied. And that's another thing too, is it is owner occupied, so it's not, he's not taking away net housing stock from. You know, the community. So I think that's an interesting point. Um. Another thing too is I just wanna say, even it's just a human level to the applicant is, I think it's great that you're engaging with the city on this. I, during this meeting, I looked up on Airbnb and there's. Uh, forty, just on any given day, probably illegal Airbnb is units in the city. I think the enforcement regime is. Struggling and so again, it's kind of, I find this a little tough that it's like because he's engaging, we're probably gonna make it illegal and. But when there's just a lot of people in the city that are just doing illegally and just kind of rolling with it and it's really tough to enforce, cause we can't use listings, but that's a bit of a digression too.
Wait, hold, I I don't think this is enforced be. Cause he en- he engaged, I think it. Is enforced because it was driven by a neighbor complaint. Like it's not his, uh, it's not. A city, like a resident initiated engagement.
Okay, ma- maybe I misunderstood. I thought that was what was claimed.
Right, correct, right, staff member Barnes, this was. This came about originally because of an an enforcement investigation and enforcement request by a. A neighbor.
Yes, that's true. And the code enforcement officer that works on that case is actually here today. If you have any questions about the code enforcement process.
Okay, awesome. That's, I I didn't know that, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
I still think you're right in that he is engaging with the city because. I know lots of illegal apartments or short term rentals that have been enforced upon and they either flat out lied about the. Status of their rental or they've complied and then gone right back into it, so. The fact that he's trying to make it. Compatible is, I think, what you're trying to applaud.
That's that's all I'm trying to say. It's like, I think there's, I've I've just seen, seen and heard a lot of stories where enforcement comes, like for example, I know. Next to my parents' house, there's been an out of compliance Airbnb for. Very long time and the city has tried to enforce on it for years now and the 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 people live in another state, they never engage, they just like. You know, create like chains of random LLCs that you can never find the end to and so it just keeps on going on and so anyway, I'm not blaming the city. It's a very tough problem, but I just find the situation a bit frustrating.
I have some discussion ideas I've written down.
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, so I have just a whole bunch of thoughts I wanna share, but I also wanna point out that. I feel like it's very easy for us to get caught up in our own personal opinion of Airbnb, short term rentals, long term rentals, rentals versus ownership. Um, and it's good for me when I'm making an emotional decision like this to remember that. Our job as commissioners is to interpret the ordinance, both the language of the ordinance and I feel like also the intent of that language. And sometimes that's where we have to make some, some um wiggles. Um, so that includes the general plan and the goals that are within there, includes the zoning map and the. The history, I think, of why things were zoned the way they were. And then I think additionally. We've talked a lot about um major goals in the most recent general plan that talk about housing needs and. Um, the state laws and mandates that are coming down about meeting the the needs for housing in Provo. And when you combine that with the this knowledge that there's this illegal. Faction going on of of short term rentals and I disagree with Jeff in this regard that it is actually diminishing from the housing stock. Because I have absolutely no problem with this corner property on a busy road in a residential zone. Having an A D U on it, which sounds like it is exactly what it is right now.
That's.
And so there would then be two families that could be housed there. In those two units supposedly. Um, or three, three unrelated rumors or borders could be there if it was a single family home. So there, I feel like there's a whole lot of. Very legal residential options um.
very legal residential options um, that we, that would meet these housing goals, goals that we've talked about. That um, sometimes we need, we need to look for other solutions than the one that's being presented. The other thing is um, I know this, this property isn't on the um, the landmarks. Uh, it doesn't have a landmark designation, historical designation. Um, but I feel like that's another avenue that maybe the, could be traveled down because when you have a historic home like this, um, there are, there's funding options for renovations and restoration. It also locks you in, so you can't do certain things. But I feel like that's something else that instead of, instead of saying I have to have special rules for my property, you could instead say, I'm gonna follow the rules and then I'm gonna use the other assets that are out there to help improve my property. So those are just some thoughts about trying to get my focus on where my decision should lie. Um, the first thing I wanted to talk about is, we've heard several times that everything around this house is commercial. And if you look at the, the ground on the, like if you actually go to Google Maps and stand in that intersection, all four corners are lovely old homes, um, similar size to this. Um, so the hotel across the street is actually across the street from the car lot further south. So it's not actually um, not a residential corner. All four of the corners on that intersection are residential uses. Um, I would be very comfortable with a single-family home here and an accessory dwelling in it or making this a legal duplex or even a triplex if there was adequate parking. Um, I don't feel like it's our responsibility to help somebody make a profit on their property or even to pay for upkeep. And so I have to really respect these zoning codes that have been thoughtfully placed over the many, many years of history um, to try and prevent houses from just coming out of the neighborhood.
But that's, that's, that's where like, I think that's a bit of, like, I think residential conservation is a mess. Like, I,
It is. I agree with you.
It's a big mess, like if, if.
Because there's not everything residential in there.
Well, I drive past that part all the time. I think it's a very unsightly general, that house is beautiful, but.
But everything to the south is horrible.
And the reason why, if I have to guess about market incentives, it's because of what Bill just incentivized us on is because those businesses, they're like, why would I ever move? I own this property. I bought it for eighty thousand dollars twenty years ago and I'm legally allowed to operate here. I have no lease. And if I move to anywhere else in the city, that's a commercial area, I have to now lease the property. So you, you, you lock in this use, that's a bad use and you don't encourage any investment, any like redevelopment of these areas. And so that's why I think they are in, my guess is if I just think about market incentives, this is why these are extremely in disrepair properties around because the businesses don't have enough capital to like bring in new and then there's no reason to bring in like new uses.
Yeah, but at some point you have to draw a line. And if you do, if you draw the line at two hundred south, then the house on the north side of the street says, well, I've got everything commercial next to me, so I need to be commercial too. And so at some point you have to say, we have to stop here and save this neighborhood.
I agree with you and I wanna make that clear in my earlier point. Like, I don't agree with the applicant's desire to make this general, like, so I'm saying, like, I'm actually like Airbnb, but I don't like the idea of making it. Cause I agree with them. I'm just saying, the residential conservation, I wouldn't, what I was nitpicking is like, I wouldn't consider it. It's like this, like really smart zone.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a smart zone. I'm saying this is in fact a neighborhood. And I appreciate that that's what the intent of the art.
Totally.
The conservation zone is, is to preserve the neighborhood.
Right.
And to keep commercial from encroaching on it. So unfortunately, somebody has to be the boundary, but I don't feel like it's surrounded by commercial. It's abutted by commercial. Um, I just wrote a million times here that this would be a perfect ADU property. And I really can't justify removing a perfectly acceptable house from our housing supply. So um, I do not believe that, that short-term rentals contribute to neighbors, neighborhoods in a positive way. I have a lot of those forty illegal ones that are going on at any given time in the city, in my neighborhood that tell the enforcement officers that they're not illegal. And it, it doesn't make for a nice community to have people coming and going and not caring about contributing in a positive way or being quiet after certain hours or anything like that. So there's a reason that they're only allowed in the zones that they're allowed in and it's unfortunate that it's really hard to enforce and that so many people go into it with an investment mindset without doing the research to understand what they can, actually can do before they move on something. Sorry that you guys had to look at my head the whole time.
But I'm just curious, just while we're on the conversation from the commission, like, does anyone else kind of see where I'm coming from? Like, it almost, it does feel like, it's sort of like, I, why, it almost feels like there should be a way to have like an ADU Airbnb. Like, I don't understand why that's particularly worse. In fact, it's something that could be better because it allows you to, I know it's, I know it's not allowed. I know we don't have that tool in our toolkit. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I agree. I think on this specific property, I think it's clear, it's not in the uh, current zoning, it's not in the future you, land use map, right? It's a historic home that we need to keep in the housing stock. But overall, I think the fact that there's forty illegal A- um, Airbnbs going on in the city at any time and probably more than that shows that there is significant demand for short-term rentals. Um, we have one in our neighborhood. It is actually booked out for two years already. Um, there is huge demand and yeah, it, it may not contribute to neighborhoods, et cetera, but obviously there's a need, right? Where people are willing to do this and people are willing to pay good money to stay in these places.
Yeah, but don't you think that it's more self-serving? Like, I think those houses if sold at a, at a regular housing price, somebody would buy them. The reason that there's demand is because someone's listing them.
About the people that needed a place to stay. Um, and couldn't afford a hotel, needed a kitchen, those kinds of things. There is a missing housing type for that kind of person. And having been a person that's done research in the field and stayed in an Airbnb, yes, it was four months, so it was technically long-term. But I, I get that need, right? There was no way my family was gonna stay in a hotel for that entire trip. It just wasn't feasible. So I think there's some things, I, I agree with you. It would be nice if there was better tools. And perhaps the, the nice one that might balance the two is the idea of an Airbnb ADU. Cause then you have a ho- owner occupied unit on the properties, plus that they can make sure that they stay quiet at night. They're invested in the neighborhood, things like that. Um, again, that's outside of what I think we're considering tonight. But I do think that as uncomfortable as Airbnbs might be, I think we have to understand that there's significant demand for them.
I mean, at the end of the day, who hasn't stayed in one?
Right.
I don't, cause I refuse to play the cleaning bees. But I'm, I'm curious, uh, this one that's in your neighborhood that's booked out for two years, does your, and you say it's beautiful, does it change your opinion if that was next door to you?
Well, I don't wanna give away too much, but it is next door to me. Um, my kids hate it. Um, my, they say I should turn it in kind of thing. Um, I haven't done that yet. Um, I just did, it's across the street.
Don't worry, they'll deny it.
Yeah, well, yeah, anyway. Uh, so it's been an uncomfortable thing for me because it is hard when people are changing all the time, right? But the reason why I haven't turned it in is because I actually, obviously I see lots of families coming in. I, I see uh, often they have, you know, the painted car that says they had a wedding that weekend, things like that. And these families were able to gather because of that, of availability. Um, and so it, it, I don't know. If you think about market forces, when there is significant desire of customers for something, usually it finds a way. And if that way is not on the regulated market, it's on the black market. And that's what we're seeing here. And so I think as a city, we're gonna have to figure out that balance and more carefully think about it.
I agree with you and Commissioner Whitlock that there is, there is some kind of missing, missing stalker option. Um, cause, because of the, the need you said, because of needs that the applicant stated, like, some of these people are staying at the hospital, some of them are just coming off divorce, some of them are just need, or, or maybe they're on a long-term work project. Um, uh, there's economies with, with uh, renting a, a home short-term rather than booking, you know, ten rooms at a hotel.
Yeah, and then having to eat out. I think that's another foreign thing, right?
So like, kitchen you can cook. Like I, a hundred percent recognize that and, and agree with you guys on that.
One, one thing that a lot of Airbnbs are used in, in our area, uh, that I know is uh, visiting doctors will come in and do stints and perform very important medical care for our community, uh, can be provided. So, I mean, it's, I, it's a tricky thing. We're maybe digressing a bit, but I just think generally it's not, I think it's easy to vilify them and they, they do cause problems. I totally agree, but I just think, I think Commissioner Helm made a lot of good points.
Uh, Commissioner Shin.
Thanks. I, I just, yeah, a couple of thoughts that came up along those lines. I, you know, I, I do tend to agree when I think about, you know, for myself, as I've, you know, as I've traveled, it's very normal to, to go to a place and, you know, and have a good reason to go to visit family or to, you know, go to participate in the local economy, to go to an event or a convention or something and to stay in, you know, in an Airbnb in the city, or an Airbnb in the city. Um, and I do, it does seem to me that with all the, I mean, I know this comes up a lot, that there is a lot of demand for Airbnbs here in Provo. That's why so many of them keep popping up. Um, but there isn't, you know, there's obviously there's a demand, people wanna come and, and visit Provo. And I think that, I mean, a lot of times those kinds of short-term visits are, yeah, there, there's a trade-off between do they negatively affect the neighborhoods? Do they cause, you know, traffic issues? Do they cause, you know, people feel that they don't know their neighbors, they don't have the same kind of community feel versus, you know, it is, it is a, it is a public good in a way to have, have a, you know, a way for people to come to visit and to stay in the city for some period of time. Um, and I guess that's the trade-off there. Um, I do wonder like, uh, along the lines of the discussion of wanting to have, you know, people who are coming short-term to stay in hotels or other kinds of more designated short-term rental spaces, you know, is, is there more of a need for us to support that in our planning, our zoning for, you know? Maybe there should be some more like small-scale, uh, you know, bed and breakfasts or hotels or things that, you know, that could exist and could be planned out and, and, but that might be kind of, again, digressing from the point. Um, one question I had, just on this uh, specifically for this case is um, just again, going back to just, just what the, you know, the current code is and what it would take to bring it into compliance as the applicant mentioned. Um, I'm just wondering about the parking situation as it currently is. Um, I believe that it was stated there are three perpendicular parking spots and there's three like tandem parking spots. Um, and just, I know that for like, other kinds of like for ADU parking requirements, the code requires you can only have two tandem parking spots because otherwise you'd have too many cars blocking other cars in. So I just, you know, I want to, I'd wanna understand before we move forward on this, like, you know, if, if we were to say in any world, yes, uh, we'd wanna, I think, understand, is there, is there a path to like, yes, that actually would be able to come into compliance with the current, you know, as an Airbnb? I guess that's a question for staff. If there's, like, do we know, is, is that an issue to have three tandem parking spaces? Am I misunderstanding uh, the, the situation with that?
Aaron Ardmore, planning staff. Um, yes, uh, you are correct. Two tandem is, is the only way that you can do tandem and that's when one of them is covered, so a carport or a garage. Um, dimensions and orientation are a lot of it too. Um, the fact that he may be able to fit five cars on his paved surfaces doesn't mean he has five legal parking spaces. Um, and I would be surprised if he had more than two legal parking spaces based on the dimensions of his driveway. Um, so yeah, there are, there are things to look at with that. If he wanted to establish an ADU, he'd probably be looking at establishing additional off-street parking as well.
Okay, yeah, that's just, that was my question is like, if, you know, just, do, do we understand there's a plan for this could come into compliance as, as the applicant is trying to do and, and, you know, what would it take to actually make the parking situation work from this, you know, according to the code standpoint?
I, I don't see there, I don't see there being a pathway. I'm gonna speak to um, as far as what I understand, the city, uh, if there was a talk on Monday or whatever in preview, in preparation for this, the reason this was recommended for commercial rezone is because that's the zone that allows the proposed use. No other, no other reason. Uh, that's why there wasn't a lesser alternative, like a, a low-density residential or, or a.
I'm guessing it's because it's general commercial, two lots to the south, is that why?
Yeah, and um, our understanding is that the applicant did not want to do anything other than short-term rental.
Right.
That was what.
But I think the question that um, we're trying to, is get answered is just really the only options currently within the code is essentially to put this into conforming use would be DT one, DT two, general commercial with the conditional use or I, but I don't even think ITOD is allowed, correct?
Well, technically.
I don't think it is.
Technically, there's quite a few, like freeway commercial also allows it. It's, there's, there's.
There's a few commercial zones that allow it, but I'm talking about.
It's all commercial.
Yeah, it's all commercial. And the only sort of, is, would you consider DT a commercial zone? It's sort of a mixed, right?
Yeah, it's a mix and it allows apartments, which, you know, if, if we rezone this property to allow apartments, it's very possible that in the future it will become apartments.
So, so it was, it was staff sort of feeling that, the, i- if there were a way to do this, this would be the only one that could potentially make sense.
Specifically for short-term rental.
Specifically, yeah, correct. Not, not for ADU use case, but for short-term.
Yeah, ADU right now, it can definitely happen. It would have to come into compliance. You'd have to look at parking. You have to go through that whole ADU process.
Correct. Makes sense. And that gets, that was my understanding. That gets to my point when I'm saying there's just a very limited toolkit here. There's.
Right.
So, can you, could you show the slide on what the, what's allowed in just by right in GC?
It's that green.
Yeah, so just, just real quick from my understanding, um, let's assume this gets rezoned GC. And he says, I wanna bulldoze this house and build a laundromat. He could do that by right, correct?
Yes, he'd have to meet landscaping, he have, we'd have to calculate parking, things like that. But technically, it is a permitted use. We just, you know, at that point, we're not saying, no, you can't have a land, laundromat here. We're saying, okay, how can we help you get a laundromat?
Exactly. It's like, yeah, yep. And I think that's the, that's the concern. That's the primary concern.
That's the question before us.
Yeah, exactly.
Rather than, I'm glad for the discussion. I appreciate it. But yeah, that's what we're deciding now.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner South or Commissioner Newton, anyone else wanna chime in?
To Barbie's point, like, this is the question that's on the table and all this other discussion I think is really interesting and helpful and maybe it's uh, gives food for thought uh, to the city council. Ultimately, that's not in our jurisdiction. I don't know. I don't know, Director Pepperoni, if there are things that we can take away from this that would be helpful other, other than just, you know, addressing the, the item in front of us.
I think the discussion has been helpful, but I would stay focused on the issue in hand.
That's mine. Alright.
I'll, I'll make a few comments. Um, one, uh, I find the, the applicant's arguments on, on traffic and the nature of five hundred west, I find that very persuasive. It's a, it's an arterial, it's a major arterial. Um, I find that a persuasive argument. Uh, I find the surrounding uh, commercial use is a persuasive argument.
I'd just like to interject, they're not surrounding commercial uses, they're adjacent commercial uses.
It's a, a technical difference, but there is a difference.
There is a difference.
Absol- okay, adjacent. I'll, I'll correct it to be more uh, accurate. And I don't have a prob- like, it, it is, I don't have a problem making that uh, distinction, adjacent. Uh, what I don't find persuasive, um, argument, would I buy the house? Uh, I would. I find that very persuasive. I'm a single, I'm a single empty nester. Um, with two kids who just graduated college, I would buy the house. Uh, it's gorgeous. Uh, two, I don't find persuasive, um, during the presentation, there, there was some, some mention of, I'm, I'm not sure where the complaint came from. All the neighbors don't oppose it. The applicant provided us with letters that he obtained from neighbors who, who supported the change. Um, I recognize that. Uh, but we also had members from the public appear today. Um, who said, no, that we don't agree with this. And we also have, uh, this was initiated, this whole thing was initiated by a neighbor complaint. So I, uh, wanna address that, the. Uh, the second argument the applicant made was that, uh, they don't find, or, or that, uh, this this continued use of, of short-term rental is needed to fund the preservation of the art property. I don't find that persuasive. Uh, I think for any property, any owner has, requires regular maintenance and repairs, HVAC, roof, whatever, and those are funded by, uh, oftentimes. oftentimes people use their equity to pull off those repairs. Uh, and that's, that's pretty normal. Um, uh, as Commissioner Jensen mentioned, uh, historic designation, if this was to, to be sought out from the landmarks, Historic Landmarks Commission, uh, could potentially be opened up opportunities for, uh, grant uh, funding to, uh, preserve the na- the home. Um, uh, I'm concerned with the number of units in the building, uh, rooms rented out. If there were five, uh, five units being rented out at one time and, and one ADU, uh, that that doesn't feel characteristic with the, one, it doesn't feel characteristic at all or consistent with the, the RC zoning. Uh, but it did that for 11 years. Uh, so I'm concerned about that. Uh, the second, uh, or another, another item is, uh, like, I don't see this as a, an anti-rental thing or an anti-single-family thing. Uh, because this, this home could be rented out. Um, for maybe not short, single nights, but it could be rented out in time periods consistent with what's allowed in a residential zone. Um, could be rented out to individuals or, or families. Um, the main thing I, I think, uh, we give a lot of deference to is, is one, the general plan, and two, the, the future land use plan, and the Franklin Neighborhood Plan. They went out of their way to designate that and keep that as residential. Uh, they went out of their way to do that. And, and I think we, uh, the commission historically, Robert, or Robert, at least that we've, Robert's, uh, been with us for six years. This is his last meeting. Uh, oh, and, and, and Lisa's been on this at least four or five years. Uh, but historically, we've, we've given a lot of, we, we give weight and consideration to neighborhood plans. Um, rarely do we ever uh, go away from them. Uh, so those are my, those are my thoughts on that. Um, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Willock.
Well, I think you're first, Commissioner Jensen.
I just wanted to ask another clarifying question. It's the residential conservation zone, but right now it's being used as a single-family home. So does that mean right now it's only legal use is a single-family home? Or could it be a duplex or a triplex legally right now?
So, so the point, oh, sorry. So the point of the residential conservation zone is, um, the city council specifically wanted to kind of freeze density how it is. So, for example, I have, there is someone from Milwaukee neighborhood who has a fourplex, who has a pretty big backyard, and he came in asking, can I add another fourplex back here? And I had to say no. You know, um, that's adding more density units. You're kind of just at that fourplex. Um, he'd have to rezon to like an MDR or something like that.
So, the other ideas we're tossing around as alternatives aren't currently okay either.
Yeah, so, um, in 80 years-
Except for the AD.
Yeah, that one, there's no rezon in there. It's just administrative with staff, right? Everything else would require a rezon or an ordinance text amendment or something like that.
So, an ADU would require, if done legally, would require not signature from the neighbors because it's zoned, it's in a zone that allows it, just that, right? But it would have to go through the, um, permit process.
Yeah, so he'd have to apply for a rental dwelling license, and we'd verify that he's an occupant, verify parking, and um, there'd be an inspection, things-
But the five bedrooms would either have to go to a family that's going to use them as five bedrooms or three unrelated rumors or borders who are not going to use all five.
Exactly.
Okay.
Are we good to vote on this, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm willing to entertain any motions.
Uh, I'll make a motion. I need to find my thing. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the Planning Commission, uh, recommend denial of the Zone Map Amendment to the Provo City Council for item number one, Justin Zero's request approval of a Zone Map Amendment from the RC Residential Conservation Zone to the GC General Commercial Zone in order to allow short-term rental at the property located at 200, 210 South 500 West Franklin Neighborhood.
There is discussion on the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Newton, seconds. Uh, we'll go ahead and, and vote, starting, uh, with Commissioner Shin.
It, it's a double negative because it's recommending denial.
So this is to recommend denial?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, yay or aye?
Aye.
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 I vote aye. That's, uh, the vote is eight, zero, and denial. Um, before we move to item number two, I'm, I'm going to request we take a short, five-minute break for myself. Okay. Aye?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna reconvene. I thank you for indulging me. Uh, let's go ahead. I'm going to read item number two and into the meeting. Uh, item two, Development Services requests approval of an ordinance text amendments to chapter 14.15 Residential Manufactured Home Park Zone to update and clarify standard citywide application. Mr. Ardmore.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, so this, uh, as you read in your staff reports, came about um, with, uh, the, the building official, our, our chief building official, Doug Fallon. Talk to me about this code. Um, they've been having some issues in, in mobile home parks in the city with illegal structures being put up and, and causing not only, you know, fire hazards and, and setback issues, but, um, the, the HUD standards, uh, once you've attached or modified these trailers, all, all the safety on those, those trailers go out the window. So we asked if, if we could take a look at this and, and make appropriate changes to, to increase safety in these parks. Uh, so the, the initial change that we had was on page right here, and that seven A, uh, just to simply remove garages and add to that section, uh, about the HUD codes, uh, standards. Uh, then we turned it over to our legal department, and that's where the majority of the rest of the, the amendments came in. Uh, so a lot of language cleanup, uh, some updates on kind of being consistent with current code and, and things like that, grammatical errors, um, turning shells into mays, um, as, as the legal department saw a fit. Um, so I can try to address those, but most of those came from them. Um, in the end, this is, this is being brought forward to, to remedy, uh, issues that we've been finding in a couple of these parks and to, to make sure that they don't happen in the future. Um, and, uh, maybe I'll just keep it at that and see if you have any questions.
Anyone have questions for Commissioner, or Stefan, or Ardmore?
Just, uh, so I understand, is it, oh, I apologize, I didn't, um, just understand, very basic, the question is, do we want to allow garages or not?
Yeah, that's-
In trailer parks?
That was the, that was the, the beginning of this code amendment, yeah.
And everything else is legally is?
Most of it, yeah. Uh, I think there were some significant parking updates, um, and some updates with the HOA stuff uh, that are more substantive.
Could you walk us through those?
Yes.
Because I, I looked at it a little bit, but I just didn't have enough context, like, fully grasp at all.
So this in accessory buildings, this, uh, number four was taken out, uh, just to update with what we require for building permits now. Anything under 200 square feet, 120 square feet, it's an old standard. Um, so that's going away.
I have a question specifically on that one.
Okay.
Is it that they need to be temporary or movable? Is that why you can't have a garage, but you can have a carport?
That's right.
Okay.
And then the other one, uh, there, there's this old standard of kind of these, these giant pads of, for carports and parking next to all these trailers where it, it's just not achievable in, in most of these parks that have been built, and a new trailer comes in on an old, uh, lot or space, and they can't technically meet this. Um, so it's, it's, it's been an issue on every new permit for one of these that we've seen. So, uh, removing that and just referring to the section of 1437, the, the standard parking requirements, uh, standard parking design requirements that, that are applied in every other zone. Um,
I have a question about this section, too. Um, on number six in this parking, loading, and access section, I remember something earlier on in these changes said it needs to all be under one entity or owner. Is that just during the construction phase of the whole park? And after this point, it doesn't matter anymore?
Yes, so then, uh, if a property owner wants to do, you know, partnerships or whatever it may be, uh, to, to continue to maintain the park, then that's when some of these things, like the number six and the, uh, the HOA requirements, where do they go?
The language just specifically said when multiple owners exist, and I was like, wait a second, I thought they couldn't do that. Okay.
Yeah. There it is, there it is. Uh, 14150401DNE. Um, so we just kind of cleaned that up, uh, to, to let them know that you don't need a HOA if there's just one primary owner of the park.
Uh, can I ask you a question? What? Why was the change 14151104 made? It's like the one about how any structure needs building permit? Is it just because we don't want those structures at all, and the garages was the only one that that applied to?
Um, number four.
That one that's slashed in red?
Yeah, that's, that's the one, uh, where if it's, if it's under 200 square feet now, it doesn't need a building permit. Um, so that's just a dated statute that-
Just dated? Got it. And landlines are all dated, too, so we don't need to require them.
Yeah, that was funny to find as I was reading through that, requiring a telephone booth for the-
A telephone booth?
How about number nine in that same section? Does that edit just mean that those aren't regulated aesthetically?
Yeah, uh-
Because, I mean, I've seen mobile home parks with dishes on them, so now we're just saying we don't care what you do with your dish?
Yeah, that's, that's to be managed by the individual park owners.
Okay.
That, that-
Not something the city should have their hand in.
Okay.
Get it.
I have a question. With this change with, um, RV parks that have existing garages, do they, will they be grandfathered in then, going forwards?
Um, fair question. Uh, because the majority of the ones that we've seen weren't done with a permit, there's no grandfathered right. So any that were actually done through a building permit, yes, they, they could and would be grandfathered in. The ones that we're specifically focusing on would not be, and we're going through, uh, kind of remedies for those.
That was actually my question that I had was, how do you deal with the problems that are dangerous but not illegal under the current ordinance language? So the ones that had a permit, you would still consider them dangerous. We don't want to have permanent structures, but we let them build it, so there's nothing we can do. They're grandfathered in. But if they did it illegally, then, then you can make them, take them down.
Yep.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, we'll open this up for public comment. I am seeing just city staff here. So it's now closed for public comment. Um, Commissioners, discuss. Anyone want to put forward a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I think we all agree on cleanup ordinances and we got all of our questions answered. So that having been said, I will move that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for item number two. Development Services requests approval of ordinance text amendments to chapter fourteen point fifteen residential manufactured home park zone to update and clarify standards.
Second, or discussion on the motion? Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Oh, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start with Commissioner Shin on recommending approval.
I.
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 I vote I. It's eight zero recommending approval. Item number three, development number, Development Services requests ordinance text amendment to the DT one and DT two and ITOD zones in order to add housing density maximums. Citywide application, Mr. Ardmore.
I'm gonna
Commissioner Pepperoni.
I'm gonna present this
Director Pepperoni.
Just give Aaron a break from having to do three in a row and he processes a lot of applications. I'm just trying to help him out a little bit here. So the city council has made it very clear that increasing for sale housing in the city is a top priority for them. Now, for many years, cities have used or tried to use incentives to get developers to deliver a certain outcome. And what's been used very commonly in the past is that cities want to encourage workforce housing. So they will allow a developer to have increased housing density. If they'll include that, they'll allow additional building height. If they'll have some percentage of workforce housing, they'll give a parking reduction in order to do that. And I'm afraid that we've kind of created a dilemma for ourselves in that when we wrote the downtown one, downtown two zone and the ITUD zone, we wrote this intentionally to be very forward looking and we wrote them to be very development friendly in order to encourage redevelopment. So we could start getting more housing downtown in the intermodal area. And so in writing those zones, we already gave a parking reduction of 25%. We already gave pretty high building maximums, 100 feet in the DT one and ITUD and 180 feet in the downtown two. There are no density maximums in those zones. So by being so generous in the way we wrote those zones, there's not a lot of room to offer incentives. So one of the things that was discussed or has been discussed is, well, maybe we should initiate a housing density threshold or maximum in these zones so that if a developer wants to go over those, over that density limit, they need to provide some percentage of for sale housing. Now, what those thresholds are and what the percentages are that would be appropriate is totally up for discussion. This amendment was just kind of thrown out there, was presented as a starting point for this discussion. Just as way of background, every project development, every apartment building that has been built in either downtown or ITUD in the last 10 or 12 years, 10 years or so, they've all exceeded eighty units to the acre. A hundred units to the acre isn't unusual. Okay? Another dilemma we have is that there's lots of research like this that's really helpful, and I have this on PDF and be happy to send it to all of you. Housing Supply Accelerator Playbook, Solutions, Systems and Partnerships. This was written in partnership between the National League of Cities and the American Planning Association. But the dilemma is that a lot of these publications, which are really good, I recommend you reading through it. They're really geared towards encouraging more housing or more workforce housing. They're silent on the issue of differentiating between for sale or rental. So there's not a lot out there that's been done in other cities that have really helped, that we can refer to, that kind of will help on this issue. So tonight's discussion is really just to introduce this topic to you. This is going to come back to you again in your next meeting and perhaps even the meeting after that. Because this isn't a simple issue, it's going to take some discussion and some thought. My hope is that eventually the staff will be able to bring forward to the planning commission and the city council, some alternatives that you'll be able to look at and consider. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. As you think about this over the next week or two, if you'd be emailed to Aaron or to me, any questions you have, any information you think would be helpful, any insights you have, we'd love to try to gather ideas to come forward with some positive recommendations for the city council. But that's all I have in the way of a presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have or entertain any discussion you'd like to spend time with.
Are you asking for a vote today or just a discussion?
Just a discussion. No vote today, no. This is just introducing a topic.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I love this idea. But I'm wondering if we're creating loopholes where it will be lovely on paper and not have anything different results. So my questions for you are, when we say for sale housing, couldn't it just be sold and then turned into a rental immediately after? Just like, you know, some buyer could buy it up and rent it out?
So what we, just like what we did on the Buckley Draw project, we said for sale housing means a owner needs to own it for a year. They need to live in it for a year before they can start renting it. And we would memorialize that through CCNRs, we would put that in the development agreement. And what that does is it really discourages the institutional investment groups from buying units and just turning them immediately into rental housing.
Who enforces that though? Once again, is it based on somebody reporting somebody that was doing it backward? I mean, I just, I worry that we'd end up in the same spot as we are with illegal apartments everywhere else in the city.
Yes, you are absolutely right that there are loopholes that we need to think through. Another one is, okay, I'll offer this as for sale housing, but I'm just going to mark it up so high, no one's going to buy it and I'm going to rent it in the meantime. So yes, there are ways that people will try to beat the system and we need to think through those and try to put safety nets in to guard against that. Your point is valid.
Okay.
What all the solutions are to those right now? I don't know, but you're right.
Okay. My next, my other question is, and maybe this came from the memo that you sent us, but aren't there huge expenses to condominiumizing projects so that they can be sold individually? Did I just make that up?
No, there are, there is some additional expense because you can't just kind of minimize the top floor of a building. You have to
Every one of them, like it's like a giant subdivision, right? When you condominiumize something, so won't that also push prices up because of that expense per unit that goes into that process?
Yes.
So that may be counterproductive to some degree as well. Okay, those are just some things that
Right.
I worry about, because I think we've talked in the years that I've been on the commission, we've talked about a lot of really, really good ideas. But when it comes to them on paper, ADUs is a great example where we've got this tool that's so great. But still, I would bet that a huge percentage of the ADUs in Provo are not licensed and regulated because somebody heard half of the story and they went, they ran with it. And so I feel like this would be something that would be very good to say, look, we're doing a whole lot about affordable housing and homeownership and we're not in fact doing anything better because there's too many loopholes or it's too easy, it's too hard to enforce.
Yes, and that's one thing I want to guard against. I don't want to bring forth something or have the council adopt something that again, just like you're saying, looks good on paper, but really isn't going to get us the outcome we're hoping for.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I have a I watched part of the city council meeting when they approved the Buckley Draw and, and I didn't bring this up when it was before us. But I'm, I'm wondering, I have concerns with the the length of ownership required, one, one year. It is some, there's part of me that felt, is that arbitrary? Would a longer term be better? Is a longer term unrealistic? But one year felt too short. And I'd be curious to hear other commissioners' thoughts on that.
But once again
It doesn't make a difference anyways.
Yeah, they, how do you regulate it? How, if there's not some sort of a kickback that comes whenever there's a closing on a property that's in Provo where Provo has to review something and see if it's legal or not, like I don't know how we regulate those sorts of things.
Actually, what's been happening around the country is subdivisions just like Buckley Draw that have been built. And they've seen their units getting bought up by investment companies and turned into rental housing. The neighborhood has amended their own CCNRs to require that. And then they, they watch it, they enforce it, they bird dog it. And that has done more to turn this around and chase out those rental companies than city involvement. That's been private HOAs doing that, independent of what a city's doing. And there are communities that feel like they've had real successes on it. Would two years be better than one? I suspect it probably would. This is the first developer we've gotten to say, okay, yeah, I'll do one year and put that in. So this was a step forward over anything we've already had in the past.
Okay, and I'm not sure, I'm not too sure with the, like, the Utah legal landscape, but in Nevada, the HOA litigation is big time. Like, like there's always HOA litigation. So there, there is, there can be a culture of enforcement, but I don't know. Way back when they approved places in Nevada, they, they put in these ownership requirements, but but everything else they do enforce. Yeah, I'm, I'm, and I don't know, if Utah has a culture of HOAs litigating these things. I'm curious.
I don't know the answer to your question, but I did have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. One dovetails with Commissioner Jensen's, but could, I'd just be curious if you could help me understand, like, why are condos dead? You mentioned that in your memo. And I've learned a little bit about this, but would just like to hear why don't condos really happen anymore?
Well, in 2008, 2010, when the crash happened, you couldn't get financing to build them. You saw in the memo that I've talked to local builders who say, developers who say that financing is available now. We've heard, I've heard from other builders that since the condo collapse that happened in in Miami and all the litigation that came out of that, that there's more skepticism in doing building condominiums. I'm not sure how much of that I believe. I know one of our employees lives in a condominium. He said that one of their units just came up for sale and it sold the day it went on the MLS. There were three offers. They were outbidding each other for it. So I have a hard time accepting or believing there's no market.
I mean, you can look at, I mean, these ones, the Wells Fargo building seemed to turn really fast when they come on the market.
Right.
And the ones in Arbers, the Arbers, those go so fast.
Yes.
So I agree with you.
I, I live downtown. I love living downtown. I would love to own the place I live in. So I would love to see some opportunities out there.
Well, sorry, I have a couple more if that's okay. So I'm curious, if you could just, in your memo, you mentioned the, how the city council has given strong direction to planning effectively to try and get 50 50. And you seemed a bit skeptical about feasibility of that. I'm curious, like, if you could shed light on, I haven't watched all the meetings of like, what's behind the motivation for ownership from the city council?
So first of all, in the meeting, it was a work session where that was discussed. And the city council just kind of threw out that 50 50 as an aspirational goal. When you've got 36,000 or 38,000 units in Provo, when your denominator is that big,
Yeah.
it makes it hard to move the needle and the memo kind of illustrates that. I think what's has the city council interested in this topic is that we've been approving so much more rental, rental townhomes and rental apartments versus single family homes for sale product in the last five to seven years. That the trend is just getting more out of proportion. Fifty nine percent probably isn't that out of line for a college town. But I think the city council just sees this getting worse and worse. Also, the fact that first time home buyers are getting boxed out of the market, there's not the opportunity to start by that first time and start to build equity. I think that's bothersome and I agree with that concern. Disconcerting to see that happen. So I think it's coming from those kind of perspectives.
Makes a lot of sense. And then the last question I had is, would you mind, could you help me for just some reference, like to build some intuition on density? So for example, that new construction that just went up behind the Los Hermanos, I think it's called like 250 or something. It's that new, it's on 100 East and I think one south or sorry, one north. You know what I'm talking about, that new apartment complex? What's the density of that development?
So you mean the one the Housing Authority built?
Yeah.
Can you remember that? My my guess is it's north of 80.
Okay. And then what about the, the townhomes, the one that I lived in? What would that be?
By Smith's?
By Smith's, yeah, across the street from Smith's. Do you know roughly a bit?
That's probably that's not an LDR zone. It's a downtown zone. I would bet that's probably 20.
Okay, okay. That's, because you mentioned how you didn't think anything was built, but I was like, that, I was, would have been, I was surprised by that because I would have assumed it would have been less than the 50. So that would be probably the one counter example to something built recently in downtown that was
I wasn't really counting that because that's not an apartment building.
Got it.
It's not stacked.
Got it.
Okay, so that is an anomaly. Sixty three East, which is the first downtown apartment building that was built. That's up in the 100 range.
Okay, thank you. That helps me just kind of get a sense.
So guys I, I'll say something. I, there, when I saw the, the other graphic with the percentage, I it seems like this, this would make sense in a property where there were multiple buildings. And you can offer that, but on a property where there's only one building proposed, it's like like you said, it would be impossible to condominiumize 50%.
Yes, so we raise this issue constantly to developers because it's such a big priority. We're constantly bringing it up. There's a development company looking right now at building housing at the mall. And because we keep harping on this issue, they're looking at doing exactly what you just said, Mr. Gonzalez. One building that would be for sale. Two buildings that would be for rent. And separate buildings like that, I think probably is a pretty good way or approach to it. Mixing buildings, yeah. I, I wonder about that. But it's going to be hard to do multiple buildings on downtown redevelopment. They're almost always one building.
It would really punish the infill that you're looking for in those redevelopment areas because there's not enough space to do.
Right. So like this would work, this would be perfect, this, like what, what's up right now would work on a large property like the mall. But not, yeah, not a smaller one.
Yeah. The nice thing about that is just because we keep mentioning this as a priority, the developers heard that and is doing that without being forced to do it through some kind of co-change. But we'll see. The plan hasn't been submitted yet. He's just voiced that willingness.
Yeah, just to follow up, I'm wondering if you have any sense of developer response to this. I know, for example, I think it's four story apartment buildings are very popular because that's the tallest you can go with wood frame building techniques, right? Like you create these financial incentives that end up being ceilings. And so would we just see a lot of developments coming in at exactly 50 units per acre? So they don't have to do anything. Those kinds of concerns, have you gotten any feedback on that?
We haven't yet. We've asked some building groups and Realtor groups to give us some input and I think they're going to have some they're going to have some input for you in your next meeting, I suspect. I was going to say something else on that. Placemakers did a study for us downtown probably 10 years ago or more, did quite an in-depth study of downtown and ideas about what might work in terms of housing. And their conclusion was exactly what you just said, that because of the cost of construction, what you're probably going to get in downtown Provo is mid-rise construction. One or two levels of parking with four levels of residential on top of that because it can be cement and wood frame and it's going to be the most cost effective.
Sorry, I have one more question. In your memo, you mentioned something about putting a target on our back with the state legislature. Could you speak to that a little bit more? I, I, I agree with that point, but I just was curious to hear a bit more of your thoughts behind it.
Because housing is such a big priority to the state legislature and to the governor, they're really watching what the cities are doing. And if a city enacts something that is perceived as just another barrier, I'm afraid the state may see that as you know, local government out of control. So let's step in as a state and take some of that ability away. I mean, those discussions happen every session.
Yeah, I know that's, I have a lot of friends who are lobbyists and know quite a few state legislatures and that's, I think even the Yeah, I know that's, I have a lot of friends who are lobbyists and know quite a few state legislatures, and that's, I think even the governor is quite. Keen on overstepping and sort of like taking rights away from the city, so I think it's a very valid point from what I hear.
Yes, last time I took account, I think we have about sixteen hundred. Entitled dwelling units in Provo that haven't been built. So I feel like the city has done our job by approving those. The reason they haven't been built are economic. And we can't control those economics. We don't control interest rates or the cost of sticks and bricks. Right, we don't control the cost of land. And it's those things that are keeping those sixteen hundred units from getting built right now. But we've done our job by approving them and giving the the projects the green light. But yet we're kind of being blamed for those not getting built. I feel like cities are getting blamed for that.
I definitely, at first blush, felt immediately that this was kind of a, an interesting. Or concerning even trade off, that it seems like that in terms of overall housing availability, the ITOD as is, was doing well. Producing a lot of units. And I guess I just want to say, like, I understand the interest in ownership. Is a big building like that is in the ITOD, I mean, I think like what has been mentioned about. Is that the place that those units that we should focus on, I guess, getting for for ownership? Um, because. I don't know, I just feel like, uh, it it is a lot, that's a big. Pullback from where they're they are, if they're naturally, they're doing that, and that's giving for the developers. I think that that's kind of a hard, a hard thing to pull back on. I understand why, but I also. I wonder if that's the right place to do it is all. Yeah, and I wonder, I know you had said, maybe this is completely controversial. I know you had said that when I asked about the city. Ever like buying something and then doing something with it, like having it developed, kind of like what is being done in that piece of the park over there. If smaller, like smaller. Buildings would be a good target for that to make into condos or something like that, that the city could just do that. Or would that be a major interference? I mean, I know you said that.
No, I think the city is trying to do that. We have right now. About a half acre parcel in the city. That we're working on with the Housing Authority to do, just do six town, maybe not even townhomes, six. Detached, single family homes that we intend to do in partnership with the Housing Authority. In order to bring forth affordable housing. The project by the high school that you've heard me talk about, we're looking at smaller, single family detached to keep it more affordable. So Aaron talked to you about that eight hundred and fifty square foot number or zoning ordinance. Smallest units would probably be around that, but single family detached. In order to help address that housing issue or housing need, that's a drop in the bucket compared to need. But I think it's admirable that the city council. So values this issue and this trying to try and solve the problem. That they're willing to say, hey, let's use city parcels to help make things happen. And I hope these projects work and it becomes a model to show other cities.
Yeah, I think that's great. I just think, yeah, I guess my point is that. I hope that this, like Jonathan said, like that this doesn't end up being a ceiling and end up being that. And that we've cost more housing stock generally, even if it's rental, because. As far as prices go, I understand, Jeff can correct me, but like, just, it really does help to have. For renters to have options or anybody to have options.
Yeah, I don't think any of us wants to adopt legislation that will just really stop or hinder. More apartment buildings being built in downtown. Because I think the ones we've gotten so far have been in assets.
Yeah.
That downtown is so much more lively than it ever has been in the past, and we still need more, right? I mean, we want to see the Bill Harris block.
Yeah.
Redevelop, right? We don't want to do something that then pushes that off even longer, right?
Well, just a quick process check, are we? Are we getting, are we supposed to be getting feedback right now? Are we going to have a discussion? Are we doing public comment?
I'll open it up for public comment because it is an item on the agenda. I think we have to. Nobody's here, so we.
I think, yeah.
Oh. I thought you were city staff. I apologize, you've been hanging around city staff. I'm going to go ahead and open the this portion of the meeting to public comment and and state your name.
You bet.
Where you live and I want to hear all your thoughts.
You bet, I've just been the one pacing a hole in the in the in the carpet back there. No, no problem at all. My name is Leslie Jones. I am not a Provo resident, but I am a Provo native. I am representing the group OB Companies, which is the company that has the. Provo City Center property under contract. So we're very excited about the project. The concept of the project, so you have some context, is a large mixed-use project. Including a hospitality component with a boutique hotel. Residential, restaurants and retail. We're very excited about it. We do believe that this project can bring quite a bit of energy to the downtown area. And can be really, really add quite a bit to the to the downtown. I appreciate many of the comment or the questions that have been raised. I want to give a perspective from. You know, on behalf of of OB Companies. I have met with personally with five of the seven city council members. I understand their commitment to owner occupancy, to promoting homeownership. I don't have a problem with that preference. I think it's important, however, to ask the question, what is the real problem we want to solve? And let me, let me explain that. We have a six, there's a sixty forty ratio in Provo. With rentals, you know, rentals to homeownership. What is the real problem? What is the real problem or perceived problem with that ratio? And what I mean by that to some, it might be a concern with perceived. Lack of permanence with renters. Or maybe some lack of contribution that a renter might make to the community. Maybe homeowners are better or not, and these are all different perspectives. That feed into the same goal. So in order to really create a solution, we have to have a very clearly defined problem. That we want to solve. I have to, I I. I'm trying to understand how this perceived legislation. Solves a problem, for example, like. You know, the the rental concerns with too many people in a house or. ADUs that turn into illegal.
Generally, let me comment to two minutes. Let's, uh, let's do this, let's, uh, let's ask. Does anyone have any questions for? Ms. Jones, we're invited to ask questions if anyone have any questions for Ms. Jones at this point?
So how would you characterize the problem to be solved?
I I don't know, it's not my problem. I I'm just saying from a city standpoint, because this is a city council priority. We want to have more property owners, owner occupied. Okay, well, what's, is it that, you know, is there more, less crime with owner occupancy? Is it, you know, what is the real underlying problem we want to solve? So that's not my problem I want to solve. I'm just trying to understand what is that real problem? So and and with the capping of of the density, please understand that. It it limits the opportunity for, yes, for a developer, but to really create a really great product and project. That can have some widespread impact in the downtown area. I mean, when you can only do so many units, right?
So like, like, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, and Director Pepperoni, you may be able to answer this. Capping the density doesn't cap it for good, it just caps. It caps density at a certain level, then it gives us the flexibility to make those determinations to increase density based on the value of the project.
Sure, sure, it does. That is correct, and I and I want you to get to that point. You're correct. From a design standpoint, what it does is you're really going to compromise, in my opinion, the design integrity of the project. Whether you are now creating multiple buildings. Right, multiple buildings to have owner occupied or rental. The cost increases substantially, so I think you're you're potentially getting us. Perhaps not as great of a project or outcome that we otherwise could.
Tell, yeah.
Tell me why it's disadvantageous for a developer not to just have it all be owner occupied. That you wouldn't have to have more than one building, so. Why would you, what advantage is there for you just from a business perspective to have it be rentals instead of owner occupied?
I can, I can speak more to the idea of 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 the caps, right? What does this look like from? Because going up, increasing the density, you're correct, there is an opportunity to increase density. What is that doing to the design piece? I don't, I don't know that I cannot speak to the numbers. Of rental versus owner occupied, it really comes down to a density piece, a density question that we're exploring right now actively. To see what does that do to impact? What are those scenarios?
I guess I'm just looking at it from, you want to put a hundred units in, you can put a hundred units in if they're owner occupied, and there's no problem whatsoever. You don't have to get special permission or anything because you met the requirements. So I'm just wondering, it seems like the problem is that you can't commit to them being units that you can sell instead of units that you can rent.
Look, it all, it all comes down to what the pencil looks like, right? What the numbers look like on a, it's it's untenable to do. Lower density projects. Now, we can get into, you know, this percentage of owner occupied or that percentage. What impact then does that have on the overall design? Because as has already been mentioned. In order to do that, you have to have separate buildings. That there's, there's a, there's a cost component to that, that right now I'm not, I'm not equipped to to speak to that specifically. But those are the factors that go in to that equation. And and Commissioner Jensen, I appreciate your question about, you know. Offering it as an owner occupied property. It it works for a year, very easily can turn into a rental. And then is it on the on on the shoulders of the HOA then to enforce a city ordinance?
Which is what we were talking about earlier.
That's exactly right.
Where's the project?
It's on the city, the the, well, right behind the store, next to the Covey Center.
Oh, it's this.
Where the the old city center building was.
Got it, makes sense.
Yep. So it's a great, a great opportunity. We're very excited about that, but. Those are some questions that I that I raised. What is the problem we're really trying to solve? How does this? You know, in the memo that that Bill sent out, I believe everyone has that. The numbers were over the next, what, by twenty thirty nine, we could have no more than forty two hundred rentals. And we had to add at least ten thousand owner occupied numbers to bring that into alignment of fifty fifty ratio. That's a, it's a pretty tall order. To 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 accomplish that. And and while I recognize the priority of the council, I just wonder, is this the right? Mechanism to make that happen.
I think you bring up some good points. It is important to note, though, that, as Bill mentioned, the ratio of rentals to purchasing that have been approved. Over the last five to seven years is not sixty forty. It's more like eleven to one.
Sure.
And so that is very, very skewed. And I I just, I would love to dig deeper into the numbers. And obviously, you're not, you don't have those tonight. Because, you know, I look at it and I say, okay, if you can sell this thing for three hundred thousand or you can charge fifteen hundred dollars rent, that's two hundred months. To be break even, you know what I mean? And so I'm just wondering if the economics really are so in favor of rental. That you can't get the project with purchasable options. And I I think Bill hit this. As house prices go up, smaller units have to be the new starter.
Well, no doubt about it, and I think they already are 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 have become that.
Correct, but what we're seeing is the opposite trend, where now townhomes that used to be sold all the time are now coming in as rental units, right? And so.
Yeah.
That's where the concern is coming from. You asked where that concern is coming, that's where it's coming from. A ten to one, eleven to one ratio, plus more and more larger traditionally owned units becoming rental units. And the city council saying, whoa, this is going in the wrong direction. Our young people can't afford to live here. They can't afford to get started in equity buildings so that they can move up to a larger home when they're starting to have families, et cetera. And so I think there are real concerns that we're going to have to figure out.
There there are, and they've been expressed to me and 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 very candidly, I've met with five of them, and I have five somewhat different perspectives. On why homeownership is so important. That's why I raised that question, is what really is the underlying? Here's an example, if the perception is that renters are bad for neighborhoods. Or renters don't create stability in a neighborhood. If if that is the problem we're trying to solve, well, I believe a really great, well thought out, planned project in the downtown area. That people want to live in could potentially create the stability. That might be that concern, right? I'm just giving that as an example, so.
I I don't want to interrupt, but I I I could tell you like two case studies if you really want to get a pulse on why. Why there's this anti-rental sentiment. One, I would say to go back in the archives and watch the planning commission meeting for Buckley Draw. This, this, this item that came up before the commission last.
Did you have the neighborhood come out?
Uh, there was, there was a fair amount of neighborhood members. And the second part to that would be, and I'd read the community letters as well. The second part would be, I don't know if the, does the city record district or or neighborhood district meetings?
Yes.
Because we had a, I I attended the neighborhood district meeting on that, and for about. An hour and a half was straight public comment and and the response. You heard everything that that renters were, they bring in a criminal element. They are unstable, they're transient. They're, uh. I mean, you hear a lot of things, they don't take care of it, they don't do maintenance, and I'm not, I'm not dismissing all of those sentiments outright. Sometimes, though, when I, when I hear them, I hear these like kind of dog whistles for like, it's bringing in people poorer than me. Or make less money than me, it's bringing in people of different color than me, it's bringing in people who. They're not a mom and dad with five kids, they're.
They're different.
They're a single, a single mom or a single dad, and so like. No one ever says those ones, but in my head, when I hear them, in the back of my mind, that's what they're really feeling. It's like, no, I want to have. I want to have a neighbor who, uh, who has a mom and dad and four kids. Who all got accepted to great universities and.
Eat the same things I eat for dinner and drive the same kind of cars.
Because they'll play with my kids.
Yeah.
I I would, I would go back and I'd, I'd watch those two meetings to to really get a handle on why. Why you.
And the fact is the problem we're solving.
Because that's, that's the, that's the reason why, that's the, how you're getting the response from from city council. And and from us sometimes, on why they, why we. Prefer. You know, ownership, but the but the main thing for ownership is just that, I think, for me. Just speaking for myself is that the, it's so out of balance that, that the city is. To me, it's like we're a medieval fiefdom with landlords and. And renters and I, I.
But but once again, it's what, what, wherein is the problem? And everybody has to ask that question, and I'm just asking from, you know, and I would pose this to the council. As far as, you know, what is that cohesive problem that we're trying to solve?
I think it's important to focus on the economic problem, because at least for me, you know. The socioeconomic kind of things don't move the needle. But, you know, there's some stability that comes from owning your home. For example, and this doesn't get talked about enough. When housing prices have spiked, I moved here in twenty fifteen, right? So bought at a pretty good time. Housing prices have spiked, my mortgage has not gone up, right? I have a predictable payment.
Yeah.
All, all the people I know that were renting, their rents went way up as a response, and you lose that stability and that predictability in that case. Um, I do think there's an important place for rentals and homeownership. I would not want to go ten to one the other way either, right? But ten to one's too far, and it it takes opportunities away from people for this.
So I was going to move that we end discussion on this item, because there's only about thirty minutes left for me to ride my bike home safely. We're going to talk about it again, he said next month, and he asked us to send him our questions. So I I would suggest that we've. Got some food for thought and staff can mull over our comments and the issues that were raised and come back with some. Some more things to discuss to refine it better. So I don't know if I can make a motion without you asking for one, but I would make a motion that we end discussion on item three.
All those in favor?
I'll second.
Can we just make the motion that you're going to continue the item?
To the next meeting.
Yeah, this is a motion for continuance.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know if it was just a discussion item, how we would make that motion, because.
Put forward a motion for continuance.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we continue item three. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we continue item three for further discussion at the July meeting.
Any discussion on a motion? No?
I'll second.
Second, we got a second from to my left of all those in favor.
Great, I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. Item number four. Development Services Request an Ordnance Tax Amendment to Section fourteen point one four D point one one zero. Mixed use zones, parking, loading and access to remove the parking reduction from mixed use zones. Citywide application, Mr. Ardmore.
Um, I will be brief. Is that working?
This one's working, okay, good. All right, uh, this one is just a quick change on parking. So when this zone is written, uh, they, we put in uh, an automatic parking reduction, uh, identical to the downtown zones. As we've experienced, the applications coming in, one has been approved, others are in the pipeline. Uh, that automatic reduction doesn't seem appropriate. Uh, these are being used in suburban areas that aren't truly walkable like they are downtown. Um, so we would suggest removing the automatic reduction and relying upon the, the other uh, reduction uh, tools that are offered in chapter fourteen thirty seven. Um, and just starting with the standard of of parking at a hundred percent, uh, per code. Are there any questions on that?
Go ahead.
Could you, um, just expound a little bit on some examples of what felt like it wasn't appropriate?
So the, so the first one we we've seen approved is over on, you may remember on the corner of Lakeview, or not, Lakeview Center Street and uh, twenty fifty West on the southwest corner. Uh, where there's a kind of a trucking company there right now. Uh, so that zone was approved. We felt as a staff it was underparked. A lot of neighborhood comment came out as an underparked council shared. Some council members shared that concern. But it met code, it met code, so, um, uh, the zone met the general plan. It was approved. So we're, we haven't seen that come to life yet because it hasn't been built, has no, no project plans come forward, uh, but that's a concern of ours. As we've seen a couple more come in along Lakeview Parkway, uh, through the pipeline, even more suburban than that location, right? So they're, they're out in what is right now a farmer field. Uh, on a, on a major corridor, uh, with just neighborhood streets above it. Uh, it doesn't really, uh, justify giving that automatic break.
And and the, the tools that we're, we're talking about are the ones where like, oh, is it, um, traffic study adjacent to
Transportation demand management program. Look at that. You can look at, um, uh, use sharing, daytime, nighttime use sharing, uh, joint use kind of things.
Right.
Uh, we have different tools in that chapter that people can use, that developers can use, uh, that, that could be sufficient for their needs.
Yeah. Do they have another question?
Just a bit of a follow on to that. You're saying in the TDM, uh, in the, basically in chapter fourteen dot thirty seven, are there tools that could get to that seventy five percent?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I mean, that, that allows you to go down to a one per one. Um, we haven't seen that request even asked for or approved. Uh, but yeah, it could definitely get to that, that twenty five percent discount.
Okay, so because the reason why I I ask is because I could imagine a world where, uh, like there was, there was logic behind the initial request. Like there are, there are probably some very good mixed use residential where you, the seventy five percent makes a lot of sense.
And ideally, those areas, we're thinking in some of these neighborhood plans, uh, Third South, Fifth West.
Yeah.
We, we looked at that tonight in a map where we've slated that for mixed use. That discount would make a lot of sense there. It's not being used there. It's being used in the Southwest Provo.
Got it. So but, but there, there still would be ways to get to that.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Shin.
Yeah, I have a question with, so it sounds like the main, uh, at least the, the, the situation on the ground is that this, the mixed use zone was intended for like a walkable, mixed use kind of place. In practice, it hasn't been utilized in that way. And 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 so this is, this is the issue that we're seeing. Um, is there, are there, are there zones planned or or zoning provisions for, uh, you know, lower parking requirements around things like in areas of transit, uh, like near transit stations, uh, like, like transit oriented, oriented development type zoning? Is that something we have in our, in our toolbox for those kinds of areas?
Yeah, so this, this discount is in those DT one, uh, DT two, ITOD, Gateway. Uh, all those downtown zones have this automatically in there because they are in that core with good transit service and good walkability and things like that. Yes.
But also to your question, one of the things we've asked the consultant to look at in the zoning ordinance rewrite that's underway right now is to look at our chapter fourteen thirty seven and look for efficiencies in parking because there are some things in in our parking reissues right now that I think are problematic, like requiring parking based on crow square footage of a building. Why are we requiring parking for bathrooms and stairwells and elevator shafts? That doesn't make sense to me. So the consultant's looking at that more comprehensively, way beyond the scope of this. But parking is an issue to us and not overparking problem, projects is an issue to us. So we're having a look at that.
Yeah, this is essentially just a, a quick fix before the whole title gets rewritten.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. With that, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on item number four? Seeing no one come forward, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, comment portion for item number four. Um, also acknowledge there's no district or neighborhood representatives. Commissioners to discuss? I, I, um, I, I think I, I do prefer the, uh, just not the, the blanket grant of the reduction, um, and the tools. I think the tools for the reduction that we do have are, I think they're adequate. Um, and they, they're kind of robust. They, they have some expectation of of reliability and they're, they're kind of proven. Commissioner Jensen?
I think that we would just want to forward a request to the city staff or the city council to look at why our mixed use zones aren't being used the way we wanted them to and find some, like you were saying, to differentiate those, where we actually want those to be applied.
Yeah, I agree that this is probably going to be fine. I do think that, um, maybe it's not an appropriate use in Southwest Provo, but there are more places in Provo outside of downtown that I think it would work. Like, I would love that old school that is on my street, fourteen sixty north, to be like a mixed use thing. I, maybe Granby will never do that, but it'd be so nice if there were like a couple of restaurants, some, you know, apartments for the older folks who are selling their homes but want to stay in the neighborhood, that kind of thing. Like, I, I just think it's underrated and it's underused in places. There's a bus line and there's, you know, a, a short walk to the State Street buses to all the shops there. So totally really walkable as far as Provo goes. So just want to plug that because I think that there are places where we haven't considered people would be willing to do, to be walking more and would love that. And it also makes, um, the general uh, car centricism of an area a lot, like, lower. You can lower that if there's a place close by that has a little bit of interest for the neighborhood to gather and things like that. So I just want to point that out.
Yeah, I, I have. I'm, I'm pretty tired. So I apologize if it doesn't make the most sense, but I do see a little bit of inconsistency just with the city policy in summary with this issue generally because, for example, we just banned overnight street parking on, uh, Slate Canyon Drive, the city council did that. And the rationale for doing that was we basically said if you reduce the number of available parking spots, you then will, uh, address over occupancy. And we basically said like parking is the number one tool to address over occupancy. But then at the same time, we're saying, hey, we just need to create more parking spots so that we can continue to have, uh, more occupancy. And I also see there's an issue where we have, like, a very kind of well-established, uh, lack of budget to continue invest in our existing infrastructure and kind of just the more total mile, like the way I think about it is it's just like miles driven in the city. And the more we kind of like build further away from amenities with more parking spots where people can actually park, the more miles driven that we're going to be creating, which creates more of an infrastructure burden that we already kind of don't have the budget to sport. So anyway, I'm not necessarily saying it's a bad idea. Um, I just think it's kind of in general the wrong direction. I think we need to sort of make parking in general a little bit harder and people realize the cost of it a bit more because it is a very, very costly thing that we kind of all take for granted. That's my thoughts.
A hundred percent agree with you. Thank you for this.
Yeah, I would just add a couple of thought. I, I definitely agree with the, with the gist of that statement. And I think that, um, excuse me. Pardon me. Um, I think that one of the, what, what I hear, I've heard a lot of, um, public comment in different meetings. I've listened to some of the backlogs of meetings, both neighborhood district meetings, uh, like planning commission meetings of, for, for various new developments that have gone up and and when I, or just existing things, when I hear the, the concerns and the complaints people have, so many of them center around, you know, uh, just parking, traffic, speeding. And it's like so much of that just goes around and around those same three issues of the negative effects of having so many people driving for so long in, in the city, you know? And I, I guess this is, you know, I, I would love to see better kinds of mixed use zoning that actually do allow places where people can choose to live and not have to drive their car to go everywhere. I think it's hard, it's hard to imagine how the city is going to scale and going to continue to grow without running more and more into those, 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 those issues that we're seeing where people just instinctively resist any kind of change, any kind of growth because it negatively affects them because people, everybody has to drive through the city, through their neighborhoods to get anywhere. I, you know, I, I used to live in the Joaquin neighborhood when I went to BYU, you know, not, um, not, not all that long ago. And I, I, it's for me, I, I know I've, I've talked with people before, including, you know, family and friends. And it's, it's, there's, everybody agrees that like it would be great if students could live in, near campus without having to drive a car. I think local residents would totally agree with that. It would be great if students did not have to drive. But there's, you know, I, it, it's not, the zoning we have now doesn't, doesn't allow like neighborhood grocery. It doesn't make it easy to have that kind of stuff happen. Um, and I, I could imagine easily, you know, a grocery store, those kinds of local amenities near BYU, where the students live in those dense areas that could, you know, could sustain themselves off foot traffic alone and no parking. You know, I mean, that would, that would cause other problems, but I, you know, I'd love to hear us come back to like thinking about how we could support that kind of stuff, especially in the student neighborhoods where people, you know, students don't have a lot of money. They'd love to be able to bike to get to their necessities and then do that kind of stuff. So that, that's, that, that's all I had to say.
At the same time, I know students that live two blocks from campus and drive their car to campus. So there's a, a deeper cultural behavioral thing that we're fighting here.
Yeah, but I think that this is kind of what Jeff was saying, like make the cost something they have to bear instead of other people. I mean, that's the thing. It's, it is a cost. It's a huge cost. Um, the fact that people in Provo so often express an entitlement to parking, the parking in front of their house, the parking anywhere. It's extremely costly and it's a subsidy. And I think that we need to regard it as that.
Well, um, let's, let's focus on the, not to, I, I do like hearing, uh, these comments, but let's focus on this. Specifically, the, the removal of, uh, carte blanche, uh, reduction to using the
Yeah, I'm not very familiar with the tools that are available, but I think that's an important piece. We talked about mixed use in Southwest Provo might be different than mixed use downtown. But as long as those tools saying that if you're close to public transportation, you can reduce exists, that will create that natural change. There's already an economic incentive to try to decrease the parking, right, for the builder. Um, and so as long as those are sufficient tools, I think, I think it's fine.
Uh, for the sake of Commissioner Jensen, uh, and the bike ride, can I make a motion, Commissioner?
I was gonna say we should have Robert do his last motion.
Ah, that's good. I shouldn't, I shouldn't usurp that.
We ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's do it. Uh, let's forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number four. Development Services Request an Ordnance Tax Amendment to Section fourteen point one four D dot one one zero. Mixed use zones, parking, loading and access to remove the parking reduction from the mixed use zones. Citywide application.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? None? Okay, we have a second. Uh, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Commissioner Shin?
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, I vote aye. Uh, items recommended for approval eight to zero. Um, item number five, election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Jeff Whitlock. He's already trained, ready to go.
Anyone want to make any other nominations or feel free to nominate yourself?
I nominate Jonathan as vice, what did it go, chair?
We have to do one at a time, right?
Let's start, let's just focus on chair. Any other nominations for chair or self nominations for chair? None? Okay, uh, okay, uh, let, let's hear a, a motion to, uh, someone put forth a motion to appoint Mr. Whitlock as chair.
Do we just vote on, we need to second the nomination and then to vote or, yeah, so someone just needs a second?
Yeah, let's take it a second.
I'll second it.
Did, did we actually hear a motion?
It's not a motion, it's a nomination. Uh, yeah, I nominated Jeff.
Okay, and we have a second by Commissioner Shin. Uh, all those in favor? We'll do this by unanimous consent. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? None, okay. Uh, for Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner, go ahead and repeat your
Oh, I nominate Jonathan. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jonathan Hill.
Jonathan Hill, Commissioner Hill as Vice Chair.
Anyone else want to make a nomination or or self nomination? Okay, seeing none, uh, is, is there a second on the motion to nominate? Okay, we have a second by Commissioner South.
I feel like these are defensive moves that people are doing.
I told him I was gonna nominate him, but since there was already a decent one, I was just gonna leave him out. So I told him he had to second it.
You guys are lucky. I was the third choice for each of the times I was Vice Chair and Chair. Um, all those in favor, unanimous consent, um, aye? Any opposed? None, okay. Uh, any move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn on account of some like second.
Okay.
Is it appropriate for me to give you a hug? Because I'm gonna miss you. Oh, it won't be the same without you.